Everybody want to take their seats so we can get started? I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of November 12, 2019. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Mullen?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Potem Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Farrar?
Here.
You have a call.
Axel Polito, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge of allegiance of the United States of America to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
May I have an approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and move item 5A after oral communications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 1, 2019 with the amended agenda posted on November 7, 2019.
Thank you Heather. Could we please have a staff update on disaster response and recovery?
Good evening Mayor and Council. Since the last time I reported, we've had quite a lot going on. As you recall, we had a flurry of public safety power shut-off warnings and then we actually had an actual shut-off in the Cuthbert Circuit in the Point Dume area. When that happened, we immediately requested extra share patrols for the affected area. Over the period of time from when it started, which was 9 o'clock on the 30th through most of the 31st till like, I think it was 6 o'clock at night, we put out 55 emergency weather and utility alerts, 32 Nixle alerts were posted, 50 messages on nextdoor.com and overall on our other social media programs, 548 messages to try and keep the community up to date on the latest information we were getting from Edison. During that time, we were also monitoring a fire in Ventura County, the Maria Fire. We were participating in conference calls with LA County Fire because we were still in, you know, a red flag warning, so we were actively working with our area partners to make sure that we were all prepared in case something happened in our area. And city staff was placed on call during that period. Fire Safety Liaison Jerry has really done a lot of home ignition zone assessments now. He's up to 105. And he also recently got, we've been waiting for a waiver so that we can bring volunteers into the program. We now have that, so it's going to be expanding even further, so that's exciting news. Also, at the Woolsey Fire Anniversary Community Gathering that we had this past Saturday, which was really great, we provided nearly 300 emergency handcrake flashlight radios to the community and those will come in handy for power shut-offs or other emergencies. Also, the traffic management evacuation communication plans have all been drafted. What these are is when we did our tabletop exercise with all our area partners in August, the scenario was an evacuation and from that we created three working groups, one on traffic management, one on evacuation routes and one on communication supporting evacuation. And each of these sections were assigned to different subgroups. Public Works Director Rob DeBeau, he headed up the group who did the traffic management plan, which was presented to the Public Safety Commission last week. The evacuation plan was put together by the Sheriff's Department, communications plan was put together by the Fire Department, and now we're in the middle of merging those all together into a comprehensive draft, which will be coming forward soon. We've also chosen a vendor to do a sound study for an outdoor warning siren system, so that should be happening after the holidays. I mean, they'll be in place before that, but this study will probably start after the holidays. Also today, city staff submitted a public safety power shut-off resiliency grant application requesting funds for a PSPS resource center at Bluff Park, essentially installing solar power and backup batteries, so it could be a place where people can go if they need power. They could go to the Michael Landon Center of Bluff Park and get some support with power. We also are requesting funds for a mobile communications unit, that would be for our Public Works Department to be able to pull out and support communication capabilities for both field staff and the community. It could create like a public wifi, a mobile wifi that could go out there so people could communicate and also come and charge their cellphones. And as always, like we say, sign up for disaster notifications and alerts at malibu city.org/alerts or malibu city.org/disasternotifications. City hotline is 310-456-9982 or one call to City Hall, 310-456-CITY, C-I-T-Y, extension 311. Thank you.
Thank you Susan. Next, we will have an environmental sustainability report from Director Yolanda Bundy on changes to the upcoming changes to the California Building Code.
Excuse me Mayor, we have one other part of our update on recovery.
Excuse me.
Good evening, just to give you a quick update on where we are with applications going through the Planning Department as well as environmental sustainability, we've approved to date 179 single-family residences in the Planning Department. That's working towards our target of 473 approvals. We've also approved 29 second units or accessory dwelling units and about 110 other accessory structures, barns, fences, or garages. We recently had some questions asking about the trend in applications submitted to the Planning Department related to the fire. As you can see here, there was a bit of a slowdown in June and July, but it's picked up and I would anticipate that November will go up as well, it's just we're halfway, or not even halfway through the month yet, but there has been in general a steady increase in applications that have come through the Planning Department. We've also continued to implement the fee waiver program as approved by the City Council. To date, we've waived, and that includes either waiving fees and also refunds, a little over a million dollars.
The numbers for building and safety, we have approved 35 homes. We have 52 under review, that makes it a total of 87, this constitute 18% of the total rebuilt through the plan sheet process. We have, is anticipating another 93 homes to come in, so we're working on that.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, now we will have written and oral communications from the public.
Mayor, we're actually now back at 1B. That was the completion of 1A and now we have an update on 1B.
Oh, sorry, I thought that was it. Excuse me.
Good evening, I wanted to take the time this evening to talk to you briefly about the soon coming to be into effect, the 2019 California Buildings Code Standards. The State Health and Safety Code mandates that the California Building Standard Commission adopts and publishes the California Building Code, what we usually call Title 24, every three years. The state of California released those documents this summer and they will be coming to effect January 1 of 2020. Sorry. Local amendments. The state of California gives every jurisdiction the ability to amend the codes in a more restrictive way, by justifying in geological, topographic, climatic conditions. The city of Malibu adopts by referencing Los Angeles County codes that are incorporating the California Building Codes. We will be bringing to you on December 9, the code adoption and presentation. Then the code amendments are in justification must be filed to the state of California to the Building Standard Commission. And then, we have... Right. We have 12 mandatory codes that will be coming to effect the beginning of the year. We have the administrative code, the building code, residential code, electrical code, mechanical code, plumbing code, energy, historical, fire, existing building code, green building code, and reference standard code. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you Yolanda. Okay, moving on. Item 2A. Written and oral communications from the public. Communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda but for which the City Council has subject matter jurisdiction. Do we have any speaker cards? Okay, thank you. Okay, first, I'll call your name in threes and try to come up to the front please so we can save time. First is Rudy Gonzalez, then Lynn Norton, then Andy Lyon.
Good evening Mayor Farrar, councilmembers, Ms. Feldman. I'm Rudy Gonzalez, Southern California Edison's Government Relations Manager. I'm here this evening to provide a brief summary of the public safety power shut-off activity in Malibu from two weeks ago. The wind event began on October 27 and for the most part concluded on October 31. On the evening of October 30, Wednesday, we de-energized the Cuthbert Circuit at 8:49 PM affecting the Point Dume area of Malibu. This impacted 2,275 customers until we restored service the following day at 5:36 PM. During the early morning of Thursday, October 31, unrelated to PSPS, a section of the Seaboard Circuit relayed. Because we were operating under Bulletin 322 restrictions, which precludes us from operating switches on our circuits during high wind events, we were unable to attempt to re-energize the circuit. We ultimately identified a bad run of cable that needed to be replaced on Palm Canyon Lane. We completed the necessary repairs and power was restored to the 80 impacted customers at 6:20 PM on November 1. There were four other circuits that were on our watch list for this wind event, but were not de-energized. And we understand that when we put them on our watch list, it does create a notification and whenever there's a change in the period of concern on our watch list, it may generate another notification. So, I was speaking with Susan earlier and we understand that people are getting notification fatigue, so it's just part of that process where if there's a change in the period of concern, we're obligated to send out an amended notification, so we hope that residents do understand. As a reminder, we encourage all residents and businesses who have not yet signed up for PSPS alert notifications to go to the sce.com website or call 1-800-655-4555 and register for PSPS alerts. Within the next week or so, we will be enhancing our PSPS website, there'll be improved maps and the ability for residents to plug in their address to determine if they will be impacted by PSPS implementation. That's all I have, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
It seemed like to me that, and I think the PSPS thing is sort of preemptive shutting down the power to prevent potential fire, and it seemed like that circuit went out toward the end of the whole wind event, like it was almost over. And so I'm just curious as to what is the sort of decision-making criteria that makes these things happen? It seems like you'd want to get ahead of it, not after it's all over.
So, when a PSPS is established, and we understand that there's a potential for PSPS implementation within the next few days, we stand up our incident management team, they're located at our Emergency Operations Center in Irwindale, they're kind of the brains behind the PSPS activity. They're monitoring weather conditions, wind speed, humidity, fuel on the ground, there's a whole list of factors that they take into consideration before making the decision. Towards the end of that decision-making process, we actually send field personnel out to the location while we're considering PSPS and they're holding handheld wind gauges to confirm that the information on the weather stations is accurate. The decision is made out of our corporate facility in Irwindale. We don't have any input into that process locally. We just communicate once that decision has been made and we do our best to try to keep folks updated.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. So what you're saying is it's like data-driven from the sensors that you're getting?
That's exactly right.
It's just a little feedback from people who are like, "What the heck, the thing is over and then the power went out?" So just, you know, FYI.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you Rudy. Okay, next Lynn Norton, Andy Lyon, and then Connor Chase.
Good evening. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the short-term rental home sharing ordinance that we talked about at the last City Council meeting and just share my hopes for the timing of it. I'm hoping that it can all go through while the five of you are still on the City Council and I know that the one variable we can't do anything about is coastal, but I feel like the fact that you all agreed to stick close to the Santa Monica ordinance is going to be the best shot we have to get it through coastal, but in any case, the things are in your control, hopefully we can get through while everybody's here and it won't be turning into like a seven-year process or something. So, I just wanted to say a couple of things about the current step, which is actually writing it, and my hopes are that you would have it drafted in the next four weeks and that you would get Christie involved as soon as possible. And also that, I went back and I watched the video of the deliberations, you know, just to see what went on, and I was thinking that one of the most important things is to make sure that the draft that comes back really matches what everyone agreed to and that there's no communication, because then, you know, if it goes to the planning commission, they go, "That's not what everybody agreed to," or if it comes to you and it's like, "That's not what we agreed to," then it goes through another six months or a year. So, I just wanted to sort of say out loud that at the meeting, I wrote down actually what Trevor had said to Skyler when he was beginning to start the process, he said, "Is it your intention to take the Santa Monica-style ordinance and integrate into that some elements from the staff report?" And everybody was agreeing to that. So, just that it's, I just want to hope that it comes back like that and that in four weeks it comes back and we can go forward. Thanks.
Thank you Lynn. Okay, next is Andy Lyon, then Connor Chase, then Michael Epstein.
Okay. Good evening. Where do I start? Oh, so last year this time, tonight, three days into being stranded in Malibu behind lines and being treated like a criminal after saving my own house. And, you know, I see you guys are going to have a meeting tomorrow on the review of the city manager. Actually, I want to, Karen, scattered, but I want to know, I see that, Karen, you called for this meeting, but I want to know why this meeting is going on on a Thursday on 10 a.m. when not as many people can get here to voice their concerns about the review that's going on on Thursday morning at 10 a.m. Who actually called the time for 10 a.m.? Yeah, it's pretty annoying, so is getting stuck behind enemy lines. Where, who, I mean, because you said it was, you called the meeting, but I just want to know where the time is. Can we confirm, can somebody answer, who decided that 10 a.m. on Thursday was the best time when nobody, it makes it so difficult for everybody to get here to voice their concerns about the review? And we're just going over the recommendations tonight, right? That's going to get brought up? I know, it sucks. My thing is, a lot of people aren't going to be able to get there and instead of saying, "We've got a lot of correspondence," I think that the people that got burned out or whoever has, they should be able to have you read their comments into the record on screen so we know, it's not just like you've sent something in. I want, everybody should be able to be heard, not just like they sent something in and it never gets into the record. I think that's something that you guys owe people in Malibu, that if you're going to have a review of the city manager on the, you know, that's something that needs to be done. I think the other thing that needs to be done is that it's about time that the city of Malibu, that you guys need to listen to what people want, and they want a real mayor. They want a real mayor in Malibu. They don't want a rotation, they don't want a merry-go-round anymore, they don't want Reba being the mayor de facto, that's not from Malibu, that's not elected. I think that what you guys need to do is look at what that is. We don't have a real mayor. You say, it says mayor, but you're really like the chairman of the council at this point. And so, I think so many people are asking for that, instead of like this district voting that you talked about that's going to give even more power to the city manager, you need to look at what people really want, a strong mayor system in Malibu. Thank you.
Connor Chase, followed by Michael Epstein, followed by Craig Hill. Connor Chase, followed by Michael Epstein, followed by Craig Hill.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. This is actually my first time attending one of these meetings, so I hope that I'm addressing some kind of relevant policy issues that I've taken notice of. I'm actually here from the Pepperdine School of Public Policy. And one thing that I wanted to address was, there seems to be a fundamental lack of communication between the city of Malibu and Pepperdine students. And this became really apparent during like the fires and the shootings that took place last year. I was receiving most of my news with regard to those events via Twitter, like just searching keywords. So I thought that maybe going forward, oh, and also I've been here for almost six years now and I, until recently, didn't know anything about like the availability of parks and recreation that are available in Malibu. So I thought it might be, it could be potentially useful to create like a city of Malibu app that could kind of keep people up to date with the happenings within the city, events going on. And similar to another app, I think it's called Citizen, which also keeps citizens informed of kind of crimes and police updates within like the city. If maybe you were to create an app for the city of Malibu, it could include something like that, just as like a extra safety precaution, way to keep people informed. And then another thing that I noticed was that, at least on the website, it looked like the most recent survey that you guys took on parks and recreation was back in 2012. And it looked like a lot of people are really interested in using and visiting the parks and recreation facilities that you have here in Malibu. So I thought that it could be potentially worthwhile to reconduct that survey since the most recent one appears to have been conducted in 2012, just for the sake of seeing like what areas might need to be more prioritized in terms of restoration after the fires last year. So thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next is Michael Epstein, then Craig Hill, then Graham Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Michael Epstein, 30601 Vista Sierra Drive. I just came by to let everybody know that I had the pleasure of attending the community gathering last week at Zuma. I thought you guys did an amazing job, you know? I think the system is working that you guys have in place in terms of government. I don't know whose idea it was. I just honestly kind of saw the marketing at the last minute and figured I'd stop by for five minutes and then I'm spending about, spending about two hours. As an event planner myself, I can tell you that the city did a great job, that it was well organized, that it was together. And it was really fitting, I think, of the moment. I think that there was enough going on so that there was activities for people, but not overdone. So it was, somebody had a really good, I think, sense of the vibe of the community. Got to meet neighbors, got to meet friends, got to meet city council members, city staff, city staff that I hadn't met before. And I hope it's something that you look at as an annual event. I think it was a really, really good coming together. I think it was something that really represents the positivity of the community, shows that the city cares, that the city council cares, Riva, Jesse, or whoever was in charge of organizing it. Like I said, it was, it was perfect. I wouldn't change a thing. I liked my free stuff. I never want free stuff, but it was, it really made me feel more connected to the community. So thank you guys for doing it. It was a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Craig Hill, followed by Graham Hamilton, followed by Lance Simmons.
Evening, council. During last week's Maria fire, I monitored TV and Twitter most of the night. A single private drone flew above the fire from nearly the beginning for over four hours with brakes to change batteries, I guess, which prevented four water-dropping aircraft from flying the whole time. If they could have flown four aircraft for four hours each, the fire would likely have been limited to a fraction of the area burned and homes would have been saved. It's horrific to contemplate this happening in Malibu. Many people here have drones, including some who might be tempted to get some cool gnarly footage. Bad idea. We need to raise consciousness of the consequences of flying in an emergency. I've spoken with Susan Duenias. She can tell you about the city's current efforts, which you've started doing some stuff. And the regulations aren't easy to research because the Trump tax cuts have left the FAA website riddled with dead links and missing pages, which is itself chilling. But unless you're a permitted commercial operator, you're prohibited from flying a drone anywhere in Malibu at all times because of proximity to the state and federal parkland and because also you're not allowed to fly within five miles of an airport or helipad without current notice and communication with them. There are four helipads in Malibu, several of them you can't even talk to, so there's no legal airspace. The FAA has been playing catch-up. The penalties have been a moving target. In one place, the code says if you recklessly interfere with wildfire suppression, law enforcement or emergency response efforts, they can impose a civil penalty of $20,000. Elsewhere, it says you can get two years in prison for that. In the criminal code, it says if done with intent to endanger safety, the maximum is 20 years prison and $250,000. In practice, it could be a fine line between recklessness and intent to endanger, but that's all federal regulation and who's enforcing it? Have you seen a park ranger patrolling your neighborhood recently? Probably not. So two key points. We should step up the education and outreach efforts. We've started. And we should be coordinating with the sheriff and the park rangers to confirm that not only do they appreciate the risk, but that they have robust response procedures. Because you'd assume they would, but if a single drone over the Maria fire, coming and going for over four hours, landing, relaunching, if, well, it appears that the Ventura County sheriffs were not on their game. And so let's be certain that our guys are on top of it. Notwithstanding that it's a federal matter, with lives and property at risk, it's a local enforcement issue too. And in the end, it's really on all of us to ensure that when the tankers need to fly, we need to keep the kooks out of the sky. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next is Graham Hamilton. And our last speaker on items not on the agenda is Lance Simmons.
Hi, council. Thanks for the opportunity. Graham Hamilton, Surf Rider Foundation, Los Angeles. I want to speak tonight about the Coastal Development Permit 18033, which is the Point Doom gated parking and alligator teeth. Surf Rider is concerned that efforts to install a vehicular gate and spikes at the small parking strip along Cliffside Drive really contravenes the city's mandate, as stated in your LCP, to quote, "protect, provide, enhance, and maximize public recreational opportunities to and along the coast," end quote. Furthermore, your land use plan policy 2.27 prohibits the implementation of restrictions on public parking, which would impede or restrict public access to beaches, trails, or parklands. This issue was brought to my attention relatively recently, so I'm still doing my due diligence. So forgive me if these questions are tired. But I'm wondering that as a requirement of your settlement with the Coastal Commission, did the city enter into any agreement with the commission to mitigate for the loss of access that occurred with the termination of the shuttle service between Point Doom and Zuma Beach? If so, what efforts were undertaken to mitigate for that compromised access? Another requirement of that settlement was for a prompt application for a coastal development permit to establish 22 parking spaces in close proximity to the preserve, should the shuttle service be in fact terminated? And I'm wondering if the city has applied for such a permit? And if not, why? Not knowing the full kind of story here, as I said, I'm still doing my due diligence. It just seems like with a terminated shuttle service, no agreement between the city and the commission to mitigate the loss of access, and no plans to provide additional parking near the preserve, this feels like an effort to restrict what is already extremely limited parking in Point Doom. And it conflicts with the mandates of the Coastal Act and Malibu's LCP, as well as a number of clear provisions that are laid out in the settlement agreement between the city and the commission that was executed back in March of 2000. A couple of weeks ago, I went diving at the Pinnacles in Point Doom. It was about 50 feet of visibility. It was incredible. The marine protected area is doing amazing. Huge sheep head, huge lobsters. I was lucky enough to be in the water with whales. It's amazing. We should be enhancing access to Point Doom, not restricting it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Lance Simmons.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I want to talk tonight briefly. I'd like to recount a meeting on the proposed crosswalk at Malibu Seafood. On October 30th, the night before Halloween, I attended a meeting in this very room to listen to Caltrans representatives discuss their proposal for a crosswalk designed to be placed at the bottom of a steep hill on PCH. Well, it was a lot more trick than it was treat. These imperious stewards of the Pacific Coast Highway wore the costumes of public servants, interested in listening to Malibu citizens. But don't be fooled. They could care less. Their open disdain for our resistance is all the more frustrated by the facts that they work for us, the people, and we pay their salaries. What is wrong with this picture? Despite assurances that I had received that they would entertain the existing underpass as a viable alternative, they essentially doubled down on their ill-conceived crosswalk scheme. But I want to highlight to folks who were not there, a particular exchange that took place, which more than validates my opinion that they really are not listening. At one point, a Caltrans rep, standing right there, referred to those assembled, which numbered maybe 30 to 40 residents, as "you people," referencing those in the audience as half-crazed activists who turn out to events such as this. "You people." Well, for those of you that were there, you recall, I exploded. I pointed out that "you people" present included the current and a former two-time mayor, commissioners representing the Public Works Commission, the Public Safety Commission, and the planning commissions, and concerned residents, many who opted to listen to their pablum rather than watch Game Seven of the World Series. You can count me in that one. Well, I'm proud to be "you people." If concern over your community governs the use of one's time, I would like to ask this council to consider passing a resolution of disapproval of any action on the crosswalk until all feasible options, including the underpass, are considered and presented to the community. Currently, the position of Caltrans appears to be that the only negative of the underpass is that it is complicated. Well, my experience is that those things that are difficult usually produce the best results for the greater good. Let's do this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Okay, we are going to move up item 5A. So our first, oh, excuse me. Do we have a staff report? Oh, are we doing the city manager update first?
When you reordered the agenda, you asked to have 5A before that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jesse.
Second here, we'll get the presentation up for you. Good evening, Mayor Ferrer, members of city council. You'll remember on August 21st, the council approved the use of the Crummer Case property adjacent to Bluffs Park as the location for both a temporary and a permanent skate park. At that meeting, you also authorized a design and build request for proposals for a temporary skate park, and you directed staff to bring back a design request for proposals for a 12,500 square foot permanent skate park. So tonight, we want to update you on both projects and let you know how we're doing and the progress we've made. So you can see here, based on the feedback we received at that meeting, we prepared a layout for the temporary skate park. And if you look at the map, you can actually see in green is the location of the temporary skate park itself. In the middle gray area is the drop-off and pickup area. And then the yellow on the right side is our temporary parking for the temporary skate park. So our plan is to lay down a high-grade asphalt, which will provide a really good smooth surface for skating, that will be used for the temporary skate park surface, but then can also be used for the permanent skate park surface once the temporary skate park is completed and removed. So if you look at the map, the green and the gray area would be the part that is covered in asphalt. And so what we would do from here is lay the asphalt lot, put the equipment and other accessory pieces actually in the green part, and then fence around that area to make sure that it's safe for people to access it when it's supposed to be accessed and vice versa. So the drop-off pickup area is the middle part there, and you can see it's fairly large and it's larger than it needs to be, admittedly. This is not, this is not an exact, I don't know how to say, replication of what, what is for sure going to be the drop-off and pickup area. We have a little bit of flexibility there, but we want to have that asphalt available so that when we put the permanent skate park in, we'll have enough for parking for that. So that's the reason for the size of it. The temporary parking to the right will be a gravel or a rock surface for cars to park on. And we believe that while it could hold more than 40 parking spaces, very safely, that can hold 40 spaces as it is. So that is our plan as we move forward for that. So with the skate equipment, there were a few ways we could go based on the direction that the council gave. And so we worked with a few of our local skaters and parents to prepare and distribute a short survey to the community regarding the temporary skate park. And in that survey, we asked questions regarding the type of material they wanted for the frame and the surface of the temporary skate park equipment. We gave, we asked for their opinion on the main skate feature, the main feature of the park, the equipment that's there. And then we asked the importance of three items, the cost, maintenance, and ability to resell the equipment. And so I'll get a little bit into that feedback that we received from the survey after I show you a couple of the options. But I do want to show you the options that were presented in the survey. And I want to say first and foremost, keep in mind that these are just conceptual. This isn't what we're doing. This is just a representation of what we could do with the space. So this first one is a complete steel frame equipment skate park. And it's similar to what Papa Jack's was, but much, much newer technology. And it's this surface, the frame is steel, the surface is steel, it has a special powder grip on it. So everything you see there is steel and definitely is high quality. It lasts a long time. You can see other equipment on the north side of the property there, like a rail, a spine, different things for a street-style course. And it has, of course, the mini bowl is the main feature there on the upper right, upper left-hand corner of your screen. So the other option we presented, while it looks much different, offers a lot of the same components, it is a skate park, a temporary skate park made of wood, concrete, and what we call skate light. And skate light is the really smooth wood material that's laid over different skate parks to make a very smooth professional skating surface. And so what you see in this skate park is wood frame with skate light, and then you'll see concrete. So in the middle, on the fun box there, you can see pieces of concrete that are laid basically flush. And then the mini bowl that's up on the right side is actually poured concrete that would just sit on top of the asphalt lot. So it wouldn't be dug in or attached to the surface in any way. It would just sit there. And that's something that we wanted to make sure that if we did build something like this, that it wouldn't ruin the asphalt that's laid down. So our survey that we presented, as I told you, really focused on three things. The frame and the surface of the skate park, the main skate feature, and then the importance of those three items I mentioned. We had a really great response to the survey. It was out for two weeks and we had 219 responses. 75% of those were from residents in Malibu, unincorporated Malibu or Topanga. So we got a lot of local response from, from what we saw in there. The main, the frame and surface, 79% of the people that took the survey preferred the wood, concrete, and skate light option versus the steel option. And then the main skate feature, 64% preferred the mini bowl instead of the mini ramp. And then finally, the important, the importance of those three areas, and these are weighted on a one to five scale, with five being the most important. Low maintenance was the highest rated with cost of equipment and ability to resell both in the mid to high twos for importance. The reason we asked that is the two types of The reason we asked that is the two types of skate parks vary pretty widely on cost, amount of maintenance, and then the ability to resell the equipment. So from this survey, you can see people really prefer that wood, concrete, and skate light option. But the importance of maintenance, equipment, and ability to resell the equipment wasn't super high. We expected to see some of those in the four-to-five range, meaning it's super important to them, and it just didn't show that. So what that said to us was, okay, if that's, if none of those are a concern, then let's focus on the option that was most popular for the surface and for the main skate feature, which was the wood, concrete, and skate light materials. So with that, we, since we, since we received the feedback from that survey back, we released a design RFP for the temporary skate park. And one quick note is that we had planned to do a design and build as the council directed us to do during that August meeting. But unfortunately, because the project didn't meet the cost threshold, that's for projects that are a million dollars or more, we have to actually do it separate. And so we yanked our design and build RFP down pretty quickly and put up just the design RFP. Unfortunately, the California, as I told you, the California Public Contract Code doesn't allow us to do both. But the good news is we don't expect it to delay the, delay the project. So we're still on track for May 2020. Also concurrently, Public Works has been, has worked very hard to complete the plans for the asphalt lot. And we really wanted to make sure that we do it right because it's not going to do us any good to lay down junk asphalt that we're going to have to tear up again in a couple of years due to issues or unevenness. So they've been working really hard on that and making sure that we have all the details perfect for that before we take it to the Planning Commission. And then our planning department is, will be in review of that very quickly in preparing it to go to the Planning Commission. So once we have the final design back from this, we will make sure to bring that back to council before we push forward with the build RFP. And we expect that to be sometime in early February. So I'm going to transition to the permanent skate park now, and I'll, I'm happy to go back to any slides or come back and answer any questions for this part of the presentation. The permanent skate park is relatively quick. You can see here, our RFP, if approved tonight, we would release it tomorrow on November 13th. And our proposal deadline would be December 18th for that. So we turned it around pretty quickly. And we brought this permanent RFP, design RFP, back to council per your request at that August meeting. It's a pretty standard RFP for professional services. One thing I'll say is that we do expect we will have a very high value on a designer who is able to lead a collaborative community input process. That's really important to us, that they listen to what our residents want and build it the way that we think is most appropriate and best for everybody. So we would conduct oral interviews for those in that early part of January before bringing the agreement back to council on February 10th. Our plan right now is to include a Parks and Rec Commissioner, a youth commissioner, and then a member of the public in that review process with the proposals, and then in the interview process as well. And I'm happy to, happy to include anybody else that the council might want, provided you understand that we do have to keep it relatively limited on the amount of people we have there to make sure we keep the process moving. So assuming the council approves the agreement in February, we expect the design phase to take about a year to complete. And so we would expect to have the design to you and approved by February of 2021. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the temporary or the permanent skate park.
Yeah, your question. So the cool thing about the temporary deal is we can sort of test-drive it and see how the whole concept of people going up there, skating around, parking, getting in and out in those environmental conditions, et cetera, and say, hey, this rocks, or, oh, this doesn't work at all because the traffic flow doesn't work and it's too windy, or whatever. So how committed are we to, that's the spot where we're going to have the permanent one? You know what I mean? I'm just, I like to have as much flexibility built into this. And it turns out during the sort of temporary phase that it's like, hey, this is much worse than we thought it would be. Of course, I think it's going to be great, but we just want to be ready for all contingencies. So how, how set are we? Because I can't really remember the whole process.
Sure.
On that, that's where the permanent one's going to be.
Well, that's where the environmental impact report for the, for a permanent skate park was studied. So for us to build this in a relative, a permanent skate park in a relatively quick timeframe, that's our best option.
Okay, so it's, it's, that's, that's what's driving this is that it's the fast lane for this project because it's already been approved of that?
I, I think that was one of the factors. I think that people wanted to see a skate park as quickly as possible, provided we do it correctly. I think that the EIR and some of those other things that had already been studied for that were key factors, too. So council, in theory, I guess, could always change their mind as a council. But I, for now, I think that's, that's the best spot. I think it's what we've chosen, and I think that's a very, very good place to build. Thank you.
Just a quick, Jesse, first of all, thanks for pushing this forward and making this happen. Really appreciate it. Just a question, when, we approve on February 10th, hopefully, and then it says about a year to complete the design phase. Does that also in the background is, is the necessary permitting going on at the same time as well?
So anything we can do permitting-wise to get out in front of it, we're going to do. And I don't, I won't dive too deep into it because we're still finalizing some of the dates. But the temporary skate park has been a pretty, pretty challenging thing to, to put together from a commission standpoint before we even bring it back to council. And the reason for that is designing the lot and bidding it and doing that, the, they're kind of reverse of how we would do it for the design of a skate park. For the asphalt lot, they would generally get approval and then go bid it out. We would generally bid it and then go and get approvals on it. So you're taking two processes and trying to make them overlap each other. So there are some common points where we can kind of condense things a little bit, and we're working very hard to do that. We would do the exact same thing with the permanent skate park.
Okay, we have quite a few speaker slips. I will call your names again, three at a time, as I did before. First, Andy Lyon. Next, Hamish Patterson. Next, Jaden Mitchell. If you don't mind coming up close to the front so we can save time between speakers. Thank you.
Now he's quiet, of course, now he's quiet. Just a little, we were out in the parking lot, and the kids just got kicked out of, out of the parking lot for skateboarding. Swear, can't make it up.
Oh, okay. Next is Hamish Patterson, then Jaden Mitchell, and then Gage. Gage goes by one name only.
Good evening, council, city manager. I just, old business, Heather, do you take care of the phones? No, okay, that, I just, something else. It was one of those, I was going to own something. I just wanted to come and support what's going on. I think we've made, made headway on this project. And I, I really like what Jesse's doing. He's working really hard, and I commend everybody for doing what they're doing. As, as I'm going to claim it right now, I'm a, I am an expert in skateboarding terrain. Been skating all my life, I'm an active skateboarder to this very moment. And I've skated all over the country. And I know that there's a couple emails and a couple parties that are trying to attach the skate park to other projects and using the misnomer of world-class skate park. And I will tell you from what's inside the skateboarding world, there is no such terminology used. So that in itself kind of sets up where that person may or may not have knowledge in this said project. So that what defines a skate park is whether it's good or it's bad. And that is simply in the design phase. And as a person who is involved with the phase of it all, the reason that we're, we are moving forward at Bluffs Park is that if everybody remembers, we'd kind of had a skate park going at Bluffs Park. It got shut down in the land swaps. So we'd, we're kind of, had already made huge progress forward to having a skate park at Bluffs Park. So this isn't a new idea, this is sort of an old idea. And now it's got new life because we got the land back and we're in a position, and then we have all this extra land which allows for all the other facilities, which is why it was sort of contentious back in the day was, that was the only chunk of land that Malibu had to build anything in. So the ball field people wanted it, other people wanted it. So we had designed a kind of a, a park that went around the park to give up that land, but that's why it got, had the EIR and all the work done on that particular piece of land. So now that we have all this extra land in the city of Malibu that can facilitate all these other needs, the skate park really can go right there and be uncontested because there's not a lot that can fit in there except the skate park. And I also want to say that size doesn't dictate quality of skate park. One of the best skate parks on the planet is the Burnside Skate Park, and it's relatively small. You can do a lot in a limited amount of space with the proper skate park designer. And I just encourage us to keep moving forward and not lose any momentum and not let this project get attached to any other projects because that is detrimental to everything going on here in the city as far as Parks and Recs is concerned. And I forgot to say I'm a Parks and Rec Commissioner. And so there you go, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hamish. Okay, next up is Jaden Mitchell, followed by Gage, followed by Lauren Polito. Excuse me.
I would like to thank you guys for your support for the skate park. It really means a lot to us for both the temporary park and the permanent park. While the temporary park will be open in spring 2020, hopefully, I'd really like to point out how important it is that the permanent park will be open soon after that. Any delay would be, would be a huge disappointment to us. We've been waiting for so long for a skate park. We literally have nowhere to skate or hang out. We get kicked out everywhere. We need a skate park now and not in five years when we're heading off to college. Please, city council and community, let's make sure the permanent park gets built at Bluffs Park as soon as possible without any delays. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Gage, and then Lauren Polito, and then Axel Polito.
Hi, my name is Gage Aldrin. I think the skate park is a top priority. As to a lot of things here, would be great. But again, the skate park is one of the top priorities, in my opinion. I think that a skate park would be great for kids. Since the last meeting, me and my friends have gotten kicked out of 32 places. I've counted just for the next meeting. For just throwing our boards down and having fun. We need somewhere to skate, um, we need somewhere to skate where we don't have to keep looking over our shoulder between chicks for security. I thank you very much for getting the skate park this far, but it would be incredibly awesome if we could get this thing built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lauren Polito, followed by Axel Polito, followed by Jody Gerson.
Axel actually just gave me his minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have four minutes.
Okay, I don't think I need four minutes. But thank you for hearing us out. And I just wanted to do a special thank you to Jesse, who's been amazing and had the kids come in in a meeting, even had snacks, and like, used the actual lingo for skate parks, which was awesome, I was impressed. My intent initially wasn't even to speak tonight. We were just excited to come and, and hear everything get approved. But then, to piggyback off of what Hamish was discussing, we learned about some opposition that just made me a little bit nervous. So I just wanted to express that I know that the opposition was saying that this is rushed, and it couldn't be farther from the truth. This has been happening well before. I lived in Malibu five years ago. And I know in one of the prior meetings, our own mayor, Karen, said that her son had nowhere to skate, and Karen's son is an adult now. So I wouldn't say that this is rushed at all. It's overdue. You know, we have, I know there are people who want to put other things there. We have baseball fields, we have soccer fields. We, and admittedly, we don't have enough of them, but we don't have anywhere for the kids to skate. You've heard it from them. One of their friends was just hospitalized, you know, and he, you know, he didn't even recognize his mother. He had a skateboarding accident in the street. He couldn't go to school, he hasn't been on, like, he's on the surf team, hasn't been able to participate. And it's because they're skating in the streets and it's dangerous. And so we really need to have this happen soon. And I really would be very upset if there was any kind of delays for the permanent skate park or if there was any further discussion on having it in a different location. I know that, I don't know what the agenda is on why they want to stop it. I know that there, there's a developer building these, you know, 20 million dollar homes or 40 million dollar homes, whatever it is. But, you know, Bluffs Park has been there for a while, and this was designated to be a recreational spot. So, you know, 2,500 kids that are skating age in Malibu should not go without a skate park because Skokeland, like, thinks it'll, you know, harm his, you know, pedaling of his homes. So that's all I wanted to say tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next is Jody Gerson, and the last speaker on item 5A is Judy Villablanca.
Hello. First, I want to say thank you so much for getting this far. Thank you, thank you. Jesse, thank you. It's kind of been a pleasure. So this morning, my son Max reminded me of one of his favorite quotes as I was writing this speech. It says, "We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors, we borrow it from our children." And I think he got it right. This quote perfectly sums up the situation that we find ourselves in today as we continue to advocate for the preservation of the recreational land in Malibu for a skate park for our kiddos. And we are lucky enough to have about 2,500 great kids. The Bluffs is a beautiful piece of land. It is centrally located and has been a great and safe place for the youth of Malibu and families to enjoy recreation with gorgeous views that are freely available to everyone. It has been a place where the youth have been celebrated for many years and families have watched their kiddos grow up there, from the playground to the baseball fields, multipurpose field to the soccer games, and ultimately a skate park, where we will continue to celebrate our youth and their growing accomplishments as a community. In a city like Malibu where business rents are sky-high, we depend on the 15 million tourists every year financially, but it is increasingly difficult for youth programs and youth-related businesses to thrive and survive. With a skate park at the Bluffs, we will have the opportunity to bring in youth-centered activities because we will have access to them, and they will have access to opportunities, youth-related. Build it, and they will come. I do not believe it is in the best interest of our youth community to put a skate park down at the Chili Cook-Off site. Plus, it would take years that we simply do not have, and we have already lost so many. Malibu families have already been going to the Bluffs for many years. It's a great place for local community skate park, and it's already a park. With the skate park at the Bluffs, it will be its own destination made for recreation, and it's safely zoned place for our kids, not lumped into a shopping center at Country Mart with no parking, heavy traffic, and it's difficult to get to in the summer, summer months. We cannot let this opportunity slip away for development. We need to take care of our kiddos and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. The next speaker is Judy Villablanca.
Good evening. I wanted, I came tonight basically just to give my support and to say thanks to Jesse and all the Parks and Rec staff for working on this and for the council for approving it. I think it's pretty clear we have a need and we have some awesome support. It's been fun to be at all the public comment meetings that we've held so far and listen to the input of the kids. They're really excited about it. And I just want to remind you why we picked Bluffs Park. So our Parks and Rec Commission, which I'm currently chair of, we have five commissioners. It was an enthusiastic, unanimous vote to put it at Bluffs. And this was after, we recently, every year, we do a tour of all the physical properties that Malibu has, including our new ones. And we talked about all the things that are on everybody's list. You know, a pool, a community center, additional ball fields. And don't think that we don't realize on Parks and Rec that we need all those things. But this is something we can move forward now. We shouldn't not do that because we can't do everything else at once. I think Suzanne Gildeman said at the last meeting about this, you know, perfect is the enemy of good. So maybe you could find something that is like one inch better than Bluffs Park. But it's had an EIR, which already clears a lot of the property characteristics to know you can build a park there. Clearly, the group of skaters that we have in Malibu is really supportive of it. And I don't think a temporary of it. Um, and I don't think a temporary park is good enough. I think they deserve a permanent park. And I would urge you to continue moving ahead as planned. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, uh, council members, would anybody like to comment?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward.
That's what I was gonna do. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
That was easy.
Motion carries.
We're moving forward.
I would just like to add, I want to thank Jesse and the staff and all the community input for staying on this, for not just being interested, but for showing up and advocating and for making it happen. This is, this is how we make the sausage, you guys. Okay, back to the agenda. We now have the city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Um, just a few things to announce. Um, I wanted to let Lynn know, um, that the short-term rental ordinance will be coming back to the council on December 3rd, which is a special meeting that we'll be having at 5 o'clock. Um, and the, right, I just want to walk through the process with you. Um, but first the council needs to initiate the local coastal plan amendment. So we'll be doing that at that, uh, meeting and also bringing forward and, uh, ordinance that will be in place until we get the home sharing one in place. So just wanted to walk that through, uh, for you. So you'll know that that's coming down the road and we'll be moving, uh, the home sharing one as quickly as possible through. But the first step is to initiate the LCPA with the city council. Um, we have coming up this Saturday at 10 o'clock, a CERT meeting and graduation of our current CERT training class. Um, but anybody in the community is welcome to attend and find out what CERT does and see if you'd like to get involved. Um, coming up on November 17th, uh, there'll be a cleanup of Zuma Beach. So if that's something you're interested in, please certainly attend that. On November 20th, we have our next library speaker series here at City Hall at 7 o'clock. Winona Leduke will be the speaker and, um, you can RSVP online through the city's website. And on November 23rd, we'll be having a Woolsey rebuild meeting. Yolanda Bundy, our, our new building official, will be leading that. Um, the purpose of the meeting is to go over the upcoming changes to the building code, uh, which we touched on briefly earlier this evening that will become effective in January and also to, uh, make sure that everybody is getting the information and assistance that they need in rebuilding. Um, the city hall staff is here to help everybody get through the process. And so we just wanted to offer another opportunity on a Saturday for people to come in and make sure that their needs are being met with the rebuilding. Um, and then some of you may have noticed this, uh, today, Caltrans was actually at the underpass at Corral Canyon cleaning out the culvert. Um, they have told me that they're doing it, um, for the water flow, not to encourage pedestrian access, um, but that is taking place this week. Um, and Caltrans has also been out installing reflective tape on all of the different traffic signals. Um, this is one of their, um, ideas to make the signals, uh, more visible, um, if power is out and the signals are not functioning. And from what I understand, they are installing this on all of the signals in the entire district that, um, our area of Caltrans covers. Um, and that completes, uh, my update unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Riva. Any questions?
I got a quick question. Do you have any status on finishing? They're so close to being done between the Escondido and Latigo, the, you know, that whole monster project?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't have a completion date, but I will find that out while you make your remarks and let you know as soon as I hear back.
Oh, thank you. It just seems like it's so close and then.
I had December in my head, but I'm gonna double check that before I state it for sure.
Okay, moving on. Uh, council member reports. Who would like to begin?
Okay, I'll start. Uh, last week I attended the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission meeting where I announced to the commission, uh, the city's efforts to do the geomorphic studies of the Malibu Lagoon, to the applaud of many. And, uh, it was also at the time that, um, one of the proponents of the current, uh, Lagoon project, Suzanne Good, has announced her retirement. So, uh, hopefully we will be able to move forward and help all the Goonies, um, get their lagoon back and get Third Point back. It's gonna take some time. Uh, we have something in front of us this evening about the funding of it, so I can't speak through it any further till it comes up on the agenda. But that was my meeting this week. Uh, this week, both Skylar and I have several meetings. Um, Wednesday, myself and Karen have the library subcommittee meeting. And, uh, we're talking about the speaker series and topics and, um, the activities of that series. And that, Thursday, Skylar and I have the, um, environmental review on, uh, dumpsters. Hot topic. So, yeah, it is actually, it's a, it's part of the Clean Bay restoration thing that we're gonna implement here at the city to make sure our restaurants are doing their best to help our environment and reduce the need for poisons. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mikey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, thank you to all the speakers. I think most of them are gone, but that's okay. Um, I think, uh, a couple of things. I think the PSPS event is just, it's just, it makes everyone really, really tense. It's, so it's, it's difficult. I think if this is gonna be our new norm, we need to improve how we go through that, everyone together and, and, you know, need, uh, your help, Rudy, over at your boss's camp. Um, it just was dangerous in some ways, especially on the highway. And I just think we're not really prepared for this new norm as a community, if that's what it is, which it seems like it might be. Um, Lynn, I think you got your question pretty answered there? No, she didn't get it? Um, well, it's moving forward. It's expediting. Um, I guess we can talk offline and see if.
I'm sorry, we can't take public comments from the audience.
I mean, we have given direction on it, so that's the direction we're going. So, um, I think, I think we're going down the right path. That's my hope. Connor, um, here's one of the challenges of government since you're peppered on. Are you a graduate student?
Yes, I am. School of Public Policy.
Excellent. Excellent. Um, so one of the challenges of government is sometimes what I see happening is we get a lot of information out. The harder part is having people receive it and figuring out how they want to receive information. So on everything to do with Parks and Rec, if you go onto our website, you can sign up for about a bazillion alerts. Actually, it's more alerts than anyone in the world should sign up for. And it gives, sends you updated information on, and you can get that on Parks and Rec and, and a variety of subjects. So there is a whole system to get stuff out. Um, so maybe that'll be helpful. I, I don't know that we're creating an app at this point. It's probably not right at the top, but we do have stuff that goes out. So I think there's a way to address part of that. But I appreciate, uh, communication is always a challenge, um, in Malibu and it's a challenge in, for government in general. And so, uh, that's one of the ways that we're trying to do it. So maybe that'll help there. Um, Michael Epstein, thank you for your super nice words about the event. I too was really surprised in a, in a good way. It just, it was really, it felt really wonderful and organic and it just felt appropriate. Um, I know and I wanna, I just want to say, I want to respect for some people that it also brought up, it resurfaced their trauma and everything we've been through as a community. And it did for me in the morning. I, when I arrived there, I was really unknowingly kind of just felt like I weighed an extra 50 pounds and having trouble shaking my memories of a year ago that morning, what we were doing and what that was like. But the event was, I don't know, it's just, I mean, hearing everyone sing and speak and some great, great talkers and just, and just, uh, all the booths set up and everything going on. And it was very cathartic and, uh, I thought fantastic job to everyone that was involved in putting that together. Um, Craig, I don't know, the drone thing is interesting. I, I like the idea of a drone that can go shoot down the other drone, but I don't think that'll be really popular. Um, and Graham, I don't know if Graham's still here?
Hi.
Oh, hiding in the corner. Hi there, Graham. Um, you brought up some interesting points. I'm kind of curious about myself. So offline, I'm gonna try, I, I know the ghost shuttle. I call it the ghost shuttle as a mountain biker. I know where it was. I saw it all the time. All my years of passing that thing, I never saw a single person on it, which blew me away. Then one day there was someone on it. I was in the parking lot and I went on. The guy worked for the shuttle company. So, um, but still, an interesting point, and I don't know the answer, but it was, it was an interesting point. Um, and Lance, I think you should join with Paul Grisante and, and, uh, together. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're.
Building sandcastles, not shuttling.
Building sandcastles. Building sandcastles. Um, anyhow, but yes, your point was well made. Um, moving forward, um, Aaron and I attended a very interesting meeting last week. It was an extremely long drive. It actually wasn't very far. It was in traffic, so it took forever to Monterey Park. And it was called ALADS and that's the association that, uh, works with the sheriffs and, um, or supports the sheriffs. And there was also the other one, the other association.
POA?
P, P, uh, anyhow, that's more for the sergeants and people up, uh, up higher in the group and crime detectives and all that. Got to hear our sheriff, Villanueva, speak. And, um, very interesting though. What a, uh, great support group. It looks like the sheriffs have behind them there. And, uh, it was a super interesting meeting. Really glad we went. And we got a lot of value by being the last people to leave and talking with a lot of the people that run those organizations. And I was very impressed, very impressed with those people. So that was excellent. Um, we also had another Malibu smart firescaping class and that was our second one. It was pretty crowded, not as crowded as the first. But if, um, if you don't understand the value yet of firescaping, of your landscaping being designed around fire, uh, really, really encourage you to, uh, heck, get ahold of me. I'll help you out. Um, and it's, I, I know in my neighborhood that the correct firescaping really made a huge difference for my house and for other people's. And the wrong firescaping, I, I still have to track down my neighbor whose entire yard was on fire because it was all filled with bark. And, um, and then he, it all burned up and we put it out with a hose. And then I was back there a few weeks ago and he put all new bark back. So, uh, there's that. Um, the Malibu Half Marathon, what a well-run event. I was really kind of amazed and impressed. I don't know what I expected, but these people are on point. I showed up there, Karen and I showed up like, it was really early. And there was hundreds of cars pouring into the Zuma parking lot. I thought, I'm not, I'm, this is gonna take forever to park. I was parked and at the event in like 90 seconds. It was truly stunning. They really had their act together. Great event that raised, they were after trying to raise $45,000 to the Boys and Girls Club. And, um, they raised $57,000. And the cool part about that was just, um, props to Casey from the Boys and Girls Club. The way she engages her team to work with that event and become partners and then execute it at a high level, it's really notable. Um, another great event we had here at the city was, uh, the rain barrel giveaway, um, for people to, you know, store water, um, to be used for the plants instead of it just going off, you know, going off the roofs and disappearing forever. Um, good event, really good turnout. A lot of volunteers were there. And, um, I ended up with two barrels and the person I brought one home for doesn't seem to want it. So I have, I have a barrel maybe if somebody wants one. I will find somebody. Um, super good event. And, um, I think, so your environmental sustainability coming up?
Yes, that's, uh, Thursday, I believe at 2 o'clock.
I just want to agree with you that the trash-related ordinances and how we're doing trash is an important issue. So I'm glad you're tackling that and I thank you for taking on that very much. And, um, I think that's all my comments for now. And, um, let's just continue to pray for no more hot, dry winds, no more San Anas, and let's get through this rest of the season. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Mikey? Skylar?
Thank you, Karen. Uh, I will be brief. Uh, Rick and I had an ANF meeting, uh, earlier this evening. We were looking at our budget, where we're at and whatnot. And I think that things are tracking well, if not a little bit better than we anticipated. So I want to thank, uh, Riva, Lisa, and the rest of the admin staff on that. Um, the, uh, community gathering event was awesome. Thank you to our staff and everyone else that participated and those that gave food and other things. Uh, I know that it was very well received and when I showed up, it was a little bit more towards the end, but I definitely saw a few people there that I was surprised to see. And I was surprised that they told me how stoked they, they were. Um, just because they're not always the people that I would think to see at those types of, um, city-related events. So that was super positive. Um, Graham, in regards to the shuttle termination, uh, I would echo what Mikey said, and I believe that there was some sort of, you know, back and forth between the city and coastal on it and whatnot. Uh, in regards to the gate at the parking area, um, I believe it's, the installation of it there is to curb some activity that's going on late in the evening, uh, that's not supposed to be going on. And I think that that's sort of the, the intention for that and, uh, a public safety issue by the residents that are in the immediate area, um, and the neighborhood. Um, and I, I'm not aware of any conflicts and stuff with that. I let the city attorney speak to that and, and work those out. Um, but yes, Point Dune is a very beautiful place to enjoy. I would, I would second you on that. Um, and yeah, we have a environmental meeting and whatnot on Thursday. And in regards to the comments about the, the city manager review and whatnot, um, I know that that's, the majority of that is a closed session item. And I think that doing it at, at 10 AM, I don't know if it would provide different access to people if it was done at 5:00, but, uh, I don't see there being an issue. I know in the past we've done it at the earlier time. And I think it's varied over the years. But, uh, we do get all of your comments about that. We have received them and, uh, we will always take all of that into effect when we make our decisions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Skylar. Rick?
Uh, I also would like to thank the city manager and all the city staff for doing such a fabulous job on the event in Zuma Beach. It was really nice. You know, it was, everything was just like so smooth and easy. And, uh, that's an indication that a lot of hard work went on to put it all together. And it's not easy. And I think it was really, um, a very pleasant event for everybody who was there. And I think if we can do more of those things and take advantage of that beautiful location, I think that it would serve us well as we go in the future. So thank you very much to everybody who worked hard to put that together. It was a great idea. And I think it's, um, everyone who I talked to enjoyed it. And you can't beat Brandon January. He's such a nice guy, you know, listening to him play. It's puts you in a good mood. And nice of you to come down, Michael Epstein, and say those positive comments about that. I totally agree with you. I also went to the Calabasas State of the City at Calabasas High School where the mayor got to give his, uh, annual State of the City address. And, uh, I don't actually get out that much and go interact with those other nearby cities just because I'm always chained to the awe at work. But those guys came down when I did it and it went up. And I was glad. And it was, it's really nice to see our neighboring cities and all the things that they're doing and all of the activities. You know, Calabasas is definitely not Malibu, but it's similar in many ways. And, uh, I learned a lot and I'm glad I went. And it was very professionally put together. And Mayor Shapiro is doing, doing a fine job. So that was, that was nice. And I think they appreciated, um, someone from Malibu being there. Uh, Veterans Day happened. I was working. I didn't come down and do the cities thing, but, uh, I'll just throw this out there for any of you history buffs who might be interested in this. It wasn't a Veterans Day event, but in the week before, uh, President Trump gave a Presidential Citizens Medal to the, posthumously to the wife of a veteran who has an interesting story. And you might be interested in hearing about it. The gentleman's name was Rick Rescorla and he was a, uh, actually an immigrant. He was born in England and he lived some of his time, uh, I think he was in the military in Rhodesia and then he came to the United States and he joined the army. And he was in 1965, was in the Battle of the Yadrang Valley, which was immortalized in the book, "We Were Soldiers Once and Young", that eventually became a movie. In fact, he was actually on the cover of the book as a lieutenant, holding an M16. And he was referred to by Hal Moore, who the, that's who Mel Gibson played in the movie, as the finest platoon leader that I ever saw in two different wars that I was in. But his real challenge happened 46 years later when he was the head of security for Morgan Stanley at the World But his real challenge happened 46 years later when he was the head of security for Morgan Stanley at the World Trade Center on 9/11. And he was responsible for ensuring that, I think it was up to 2,700 people actually evacuated from the building. And he unfortunately lost his life in that event. So there's a good book about it called Heart of a Soldier. And if anyone's interested in reading about this interesting veteran's tale, I'd recommend that you read it. As far as the wind event and all the different fires that went on, it was a happier ending than it was last year. There was a lot of challenges out there and a lot of fires that were going on. And there were several different fires that happened quite near to us up at Calabasas, right there by the 101 and Lost Virginus. And they did a great job of putting them out very quickly. There's a lot of different things going on, a lot of effort that went in by a lot of different people. And the fire department had a very robust manning to make sure that everything happened. I will tell you about one thing, and just these, a lot of these stories don't come out, but in my station, I had a fire at 1:00 in the morning, and it was over the hill in Ventura County, actually. And it was in an area that hadn't burned. It was still heavy brush. And we managed to put it out pretty quickly, but it was obviously sort of a night partying place for kids in a rocky promontory with graffiti all over it with a great view of the valley. And I think they actually did everyone a favor and called 911 after they couldn't put the fire out on their way out. So everyone needs to be on their toes. These things can still happen. And if you see something that doesn't seem right, you know, give a call or go check it out. And don't make the assumption that it's not going to be anything bad because it's still, we're still in the danger zone. We had an ANF meeting, as Skylar mentioned, and we reviewed the budget. And I just wanted to thank the city staff and everyone who manages the money for doing such a fabulous job during this last year when we've had some major challenges and where they're actually steering a steady course and doing a great job. And we're really lucky here in Malibu that we've got people that are looking after the taxpayers' money in a professional manner. I really appreciate all the hard work. That's not the fun stuff that goes on in the city. But that's really probably the most important thing that you guys do, and it is underappreciated. And I just want to say thank you very much on behalf of the residents of Malibu. Thanks for looking out for the money. Lance, I totally agree with you on that underpass. I think this is the, the fight that shouldn't be given up. And you're right. It's, it's, we'd be kicking ourselves if we take the easy route out. And I think that we should, I admire your fortitude and everybody else who's involved. And thanks for coming down and keeping us appraised of it. I wasn't at the meeting. And I do think it's worth a lot of effort and a lot of resources and, and mental power being thrown at it because it's a cool solution, and they already doing it to Pang anyway, so they should do it there. And thanks for coming down and giving, and telling us and bringing us up to date on it. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I'll try to make this as quick as I can. I too was very concerned during the Santa Ana conditions, the red flag warnings, the many alerts that we got that we had potential power shut offs. And then we had the actual power shut off, and I agree with Rick. It seemed like it came on the tail end of the wind event when the humidity was not as low and it wasn't as windy. So that was frustrating. And then it was frustrating, I have to say, not being able to get a response or getting a negative response from Lost Hills about getting traffic assistance either with sheriffs or with our VOPs. And then not getting information from SoCal Edison regarding restoring of power. And I think each of us on the council and probably a lot of people in the city got that question again and again and again. When is the power going back on? We wish we knew, but we don't have that superpower at the moment. There were a lot of interviews the last few weeks about the Woolsey Fire anniversary. I'm sure I'm not the only council member that did that with radio, TV, print, journalism, some students. Do we have any Pepperdine students here tonight? Okay, wow. Is anybody in the room not from Pepperdine? Okay, great. Thank you for being here. That's awesome. And I want to thank the staff especially for two major recent events. The Woolsey Fire One Year Commemoration at Zuma Beach. I thought it was great. But I guess it doesn't matter what I think as much as what the people think. And I think there were probably 300 community members there, and I got nothing but great feedback from everybody. 500. My eyes deceived me. 500 people. And, and for people who didn't want to come, I understand. It was a very hard day. But for those who did, to be with their neighbors, to be with friends and family members and be with each other and support each other. And we had a lot of community partners. There was food and there were some great musical acts, the Malibu High and Middle School Choir, our poet laureate, Brandon Jenner. I'm sure I'm forgetting some. I just thought it was a great event. I want to thank everybody that put that together, our city manager and all of the staff. And if anybody's listening or watching, everybody who showed up and who helped make that the event that it was. And a lot of people got to go home with some nice gifts. There were tree saplings and other plants, hand-cranked radios, t-shirts, hats, and I want to thank the city for putting all of that together. Yesterday was the Veterans Day event here at the city. I was blown away. The room was packed. Standing room only. There's a committee of volunteers that's been doing it for 20 years, headed up by local resident Ani Dimenjen, the Malibu Navy League, and the city. And if you can believe it, on this very stage where we're sitting, there was jitterbug dancing, swing dancing, a ukulele, a tuba, a French horn, singers, poetry readings, and five World War II veterans who each told their stories. And it was, it was really remarkable. A lot of other things happened in the last couple of weeks. I attended the city-sponsored Resiliency Workshop. There were a couple dozen Malibu residents there, and we were assisted by the Pepperdine School of Public Policy. So thank you and thank your administration or faculty who helped put that together. I was asked to speak, and it was my honor to speak at an event here at the city honoring the Children's Life Saving Foundation and its founder, Maria D'Angelo. The Children's Life Saving Foundation was awarded a Rite Aid Foundation Kid Champ Award of $10,000 right here in the city. They've been doing work with, in support of at-risk and underprivileged and homeless youth and families since 1993, and they are continuing. So I was really happy to see them get the recognition and financial support that they did. I too was at the Caltrans meeting right there in the front row with Lance and several other people. Jefferson, Mikey didn't make it. He was here in spirit, I'm sure. Most of our Public Safety Commission, a lot of other commissioners. I hope to continue our talks with Caltrans, and I hope to get a better dialogue going with them. I don't know if it's a coincidence that today that gigantic equipment showed up to clear out that underpass. Maybe they had already had it on their work plan, although I didn't, don't remember them mentioning it when they were here a week or so ago. So that dirt and sand that's been accumulating there, looks like it's been happening for decades. I'm glad to see that it's getting cleaned out, whether it's for a pedestrian underpass or just to clean out decades' worth of accumulation. I'm hoping it gets better maintained in the future for any purpose. Mikey and I were at the Homeless Strategy Meeting, and the need to find solutions is obviously growing. I don't think it's stagnant. I don't think it's going away. I think the, the need is growing. For those of us who go to the Business Roundtable, that's always a good discussion about community events. And Skylar and I got to do what I thought was a fascinating, very long tour of the HRL Laboratory about their, their research, their manufacturing. It was really, it was really neat. I feel like it's been a long time since I got to go on a field trip, so I'm happy to, to know more about our neighbor right here. I had the honor of giving the opening remarks at the Malibu Half Marathon, as did Mikey. It was amazing. Over 3,000 runners. They raised, I think it was $57,000 and some change for the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu, and I will echo what Mikey said. Super organized. I love that. And it seemed to have not a crippling impact on the city. So for everybody who was involved in that, thank you. And then we had a homeless task force meeting. That group is trying, starting with Alex Gettinger, who is the head of the, what's his title? Outreach worker. Our outreach, outreach leader. He's, he's really doing an incredible job. Yeah, I also was at the Second Fire Scaping Workshop that the city put on. Please, everybody, you can look on the city website. You can research other resources on your own. But we really need to each be thinking about our own properties and the things that we control and how we can harden our homes, make our land-saving landscaping more fire-safe. And, and you not only make your own home safer, you make your whole neighborhood safer. So please don't ignore that. And that night, I, and I know many others, went to the Eric Meyer Photo Exhibit at Malibu Jewish Center with dozens of portraits and recorded testimony from those who lost their homes in the Woolsey Fire. There was a portrait of Jefferson Wagner in front of his burned-out home, and it was incredibly moving. Unfortunately, that exhibit was only up for a day and a half before it had to be taken down. One thing for anybody who's looking for things to do at the city, we have something called the Library Speaker Series. And I encourage you to look on the city website, find out more about that. We have something within the Library Speaker Series called the Local Author Series. We've got some amazing local writers here that live in Malibu. I introduced two fascinating and entertaining speakers last week, Joe Giese and Lou Spirito. And as the city manager said, the next one is coming up, is it the 20th? I think?
Yes, November 20th at 7:00.
November 20th at 7:00 at the library or here?
That one is here.
Here, at City Hall. And the speaker, Winona, Winona Laduke is an environmentalist. I believe she's a Native American, and I'm really looking forward to introducing her and hearing what she has to tell us. As Mikey said, we braved the 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM drive to Monterey Park to go to the ALADS dinner. It was an update from our sheriff, Alex Villanueva, and an operational update from the Sheriff's Union in ALADS, stands for the Association of Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs. And as he said, we also got to meet with the PPOA. That's the union for everybody who's not a patrol officer, I believe. I'm getting a nod in the back. Thank you. And we look forward to continuing our working relationship with Lost Hills and with the entire sheriff's organization. Sorry, I know that's way too long. I do want to address some of the comments tonight. Lynn, thank you for being here. Yes, there's a special meeting, December 3rd. And what we're doing is working through the steps that we have to work through in order to execute the motion that the council passed. So we are trying to stick to what we said we would do. And that meeting, December 3rd, is, you know, the next step in that process. Connor, just so you know, many of us at the city have been in regular contact with Pepperdine. Mikey and I have done interviews there. I don't know, some of the other council members may have as well. Skylar graduated from Pepperdine, as did my son from the, and Mikey's son. My son has a grad student from the School of Education and Psychology. But along with that, I accepted an offer maybe a month ago to speak on a panel, Women in Local Government, with one of the professors there with undergrad students, along with two other locally-elected city officials, one from Thousand Oaks and one from Agoura. And I'm going back, I don't know if anybody else is, I believe to the School of Public Policy. No, to your ambassador's group in January. So I think they meet monthly, and I'm sure you could find out at school when that is if you're interested in that event. Michael Epstein, are you here? He left. Well, I want to thank him for thanking us. That's always appreciated. And Connor, also, if you're looking for something to do, keep track of the skate park if you like to skateboard. That, we're trying to move that ahead as quickly as possible. If you want to find out anybody about things going on at the city, I'll say what I do every single meeting. Please go on the city website and sign up for city alerts, whether it's for activities, things through parks and rec, traffic alerts, emergency alerts. You could make a career out of getting alerts from the city and listening to them and reading them. But there's a ton of information there, so please go ahead and take advantage of that. Graham? Yeah, the Ghost Shuttle. It, I think it was very expensive and it just turned out, you know, an idea that was put together with good intentions and it wasn't used. So that ended. And the gate there, I believe, is still in discussion. But apparently it's been a disruption at night, and I think you know the gate is only for sundown to sunrise. And apparently there, even though the signs say no parking at night already, it's been a big disruption to the neighborhood. So we have to take all of that into consideration. Lance, I'm with you. I'd like to see an underpass, if that is physically feasible. So that's that. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your patience with my long report.
Karen, can I just add one quick comment? I didn't address the public speakers. Thank you, Karen. On Pepperdine and Connor, the past president, Andy Benton, and myself had an oral agreement to bring the Ombudsman's Office here to the city in collaboration with Pepperdine University when Jim Gash received his nomination to become the new CEO of the university. He stopped by my office at the Surf Shop and confirmed with me that the Ombud's Office would be something that he would look forward to participating with the city of Malibu on. And that would be through the Strauss Institute of Conflict Resolution. So if you really want a project where you can earn some extra credit, you can help me out on that because I've been at this thing for a couple of years now with one of my campaign promises. And yesterday, Jim was one of the opening speakers at the Veterans Administration, or the VA ceremony here, and he was one of the prime speakers. And so we do have collaborations. It's at the upper level. I get it where you're coming from. How do we get it down to your level? It's always easy to say revenue neutral, which I had proposed for the Ombudsman's Office. So if you want to get ahold of me over at Surf Shop, I'm there seven days a week unless I'm up here. Okay? And I really appreciate that. Also, I'd like to see if I could get a council okay on adjourning the meeting in the memory of Les Wiggins.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know that.
My first boss.
Okay, how about if we take a five-minute break and, and then come back and continue our meeting? All right? It's 8:12. We will resume at 8:17. Thank you. Please be prompt. Please be prompt. We are now on to the consent calendar. I have speaker slips on two items, item 3B5 and 3B7.
Mayor, if I may make a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling items 3B5 and 3B7. I'll second that.
I'd like to add 3B6 in there, if I may, for discussion.
That sounds good. 3B5, 3B6, and 3B7.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a staff report on item 3B5?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Ferrer and City Council members. This item is the Malibu Lagoon State Beach Coastal Geomorphology and Hydrology Study. The project, uh, is intended to understand the hydrology, sedimentation, and geomorphic processes affecting Malibu Lagoon State Beach and identify the most effective management actions to address coastal erosion and water resources there. Staff worked with staff from state parks and LA County beaches and harbors to develop a scope of work for the study. The study covers existing and historical conditions, uh, assessment, coastal geomorphology and hydrology models, coastal geomorphology study report, and community and stakeholder meetings. By way of some background, on July 8th, the city council directed staff to issue a request for proposals, which we did. Uh, based on that scope of work, we developed, uh, in coordination with state parks and beaches and harbors, we issued the RFP in July and had three firms submit proposals to us. The proposals were evaluated by a panel that was put together comprised of members from state parks, beaches and harbors, and city staff, and the three firms were interviewed. One of the firms, Integral Consulting, was selected, uh, primarily based on their experience. Um, they have experience, uh, in other coastal lagoon areas with, um, berm breach issues. They've worked in Santa Cruz and the San Lorenzo Lagoon and in, um, also the Ventura River watershed at the estuary where Ventura River lets out, uh, in studying the Matilat Ha Dam, um, project. So, um, on October 14th, staff met with the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee to review the consultant selection and discuss funding for the project. Funding for this project was not included in the adopted budget for fiscal year 1920, and so we had a discussion of possible funding options, which, um, upon recommendation from the Subcommittee include, uh, searching for grants, and also there were, during previous, uh, council meetings and meetings, uh, with staff, several, or a couple of nonprofit groups and community groups that expressed some interest in helping to fund the project. So, um, the Subcommittee's direction to staff was for us to spend, uh, up to a year, uh, looking for grants, applying for grants, and reaching out in the very near term to these, um, stakeholder groups, uh, to see if they are willing to help us. State parks did not have funding resources to contribute to this, and as I said, um, our fiscal budget for this year did not include, um, funding for this. So, um, that is our plan for the upcoming year to move forward with this project. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, next we have public comments. Hamish Patterson? No, I don't see him.
Thanks again, Council.
Do you got it funded?
Yeah, I'm gonna write a check right now. Graham Hamilton, Surf Rider LA, uh, second and last time you'll be hearing from me tonight. I, I, I just want to start by thanking you guys for initiating this process. Um, we've been talking about this issue for a number of years, trying to figure out exactly how to advance it, and you guys have been really great in hearing our, our testimony over the years, and so I just want to thank you guys for, for initiating this, what will be a very kind of time-intensive and slow-moving process. We, uh, we really appreciate staff's, um, staff's work here, the selection committee's recommendation of Integral. Most, most, more than anything, I just want to, uh, I want to ask how we can help you get this funded. We would very much like to be, uh, in, in our limited capacity, um, an asset for, for the city in helping to get this project funded. As I kind of mentioned, like, patience is going to be our friend in what is promising to be a, a very long process. Uh, that being said, it's important to underscore the urgency of the situation here. The east end of the lagoon, the beach at first point, and in front of the Adamson Estate will continue to erode unless we get some type of soft, environmentally sensitive management program for the inlet in place. So how, help us help you. What can, what can we do? Um, there's been a lot of great work over the years with, um, just repairing relationships that were admittedly broken, uh, during the last lagoon restoration. Um, and I can, I can speak personally that there is, there's a lot of support for this, this project as it stands today with these two, uh, RFPs, um, and there's a lot of support for solutions to address a problem that, that we're all kind of becoming more and more aware of. So, again, thank you for, for all of your work here. Let's figure out a way to get this funded together. Um, and, uh, yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to, to take any questions or, or communicate after this, but I really appreciate everybody's advancing of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Anyone having any questions?
Can I speak briefly on it, Karen?
Of course.
Thank you. So I've been kind of ramrodding this and pushing it on you guys for some time now, and I appreciate your helping me out through it and, and helping us get this RFP done, and Andrew for having the details. Um, I'll tell, um, Grant that, um, we have the NEP project, the National Estuaries Project and Programs that are funded by the EPA. So if you can make it to the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission meeting and make the same speech, we can start to solicit funds from there. There's different propositions, there are water funds that we can approach, as well as the Adamson House, so if you can make the presentation to the Adamson House. I can't do all this myself because I'm on these committees, but I'll give you guidance on where to go to find these funds. At this point, I'd say if we could do some matching fund kind of thing here now that we have it on the table, and if we could bring it back in less than a year, I'd make that proposal to the council that we don't put this thing away for a long time, but maybe come back in six months, and that will give a number of us the opportunity to solicit funds from outside sources, and then maybe do a matching city funds. And, uh, that way the, uh, asset won't be lost, hopefully, in the next upcoming winter storms, because as you know and you have seen, the front of the Adamson is falling away, and we're losing resource there, and that resource is the funding that we use to keep the house alive. When we lose that grass out front, that's the wedding lawn, it's $10,000 a weekend, and those, that kind of loss will bring it to state parks. That's why Craig Sapp was here and said, "We're all for it. Help us out, city. We won't stand in the way." So let's not look at the past, and let's move forward on this. And I think that was a great message that you left us with this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jefferson. Skylar?
Uh, yes. I would make, I don't know if we really need to make a motion on this because it's kind of a receive and file, but would, it'd be awesome to see if we can get this, or some form of this in the budget, uh, maybe in June, when we look at our adopted budget for the future year.
I'll put pressure on you guys.
Well, I'm looking to Riva to see if we can kind of put a star next to this and have it come back at some point then.
Absolutely. We can bring it forward as part of the budget process.
And in the meantime, between now and then, uh, if our staff can continue to monitor any grants that could likely fund this, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
So can we bring it back in six months?
Uh, do we need a motion for that?
You can, if you want to have consensus to direct staff to bring it back, or you could have it being brought back as part of the budget process, either one.
Yeah, I'm fine with it coming back as part of the budget process, Riva.
Got it.
There's consensus on that?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, apparently so. Thank you. So I moved to receive and file this report on the Malibu Lagoon State Beach Coastal Geomorphology and Hydrology Study.
Yep, you don't need a motion.
Okay, thank you. Our next, uh, item that's been polled is 3B6, and that was by Council Member Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor Ferrer. Uh, on 3B6, I read a, a statement that came in from Paul and Ann Hoffman, and they were very detailed in their expressions. That's not what I was actually curious about. Um, my question was on 3B6, that I've always stated in the past how beneficial it is to the community to have the weekly updates from the city manager's office, because that gives the community kind of a overall look at what we're doing here at the city, and I've found that very valuable. And I know it's time-consuming for the city manager because she has to go to the department heads and kind of squirrel them away and say, "Hey, they gotta do this." heads and kind of squirrel them away and say, "Hey, they gotta do this." But I didn't see that in here. If we could keep that instead of deleting that, it was item number six, city manager, on, where it's down, city manager from her, on number six. It's the briefs that I find so valuable, because for everybody that's watching out there and the Pepperdine students that are here, we delve into our work here in details that you don't understand or you don't see. And it may be frustrating for you when you see decisions that we make as a group and don't have definition. What the city manager's briefs does is it tells you a week or two ahead of time what will be going on, and if you're into it, follow up on it. So I didn't want to lose that in the breakdown here. That's why I was asking the counselor if we could keep that in there.
What are you referring to?
It's number six on page. Yeah, it looks like revision adopted 326 of 18.
Jefferson?
Yeah.
In the top right-hand corner, it'll say page, and then two letters and a dash and a number?
CM1.
Okay.
So the idea here is that the general public and people like yourselves can go, "Hey, I get an idea what's going on. This interests me, this doesn't interest me." The details, she does it in about a paragraph or less. But for those of us that aren't here at City Hall, I've always found it interesting, and I get a number of comments from people out in the public that say, "Hey, that's good stuff. You gotta do that." And I'd hate to lose that and not have that in here and retain for two years, because then you can go back and say, "Hey, Billy Bob, Susie Q, we told you on this date and that time that this is what was coming up. Did everybody find?"
Can Councilmember, can I just ask a question of the city attorney on that? Because those documents are actually on the city's website, and the historical data is on the website, so I don't know if we also need it in the retention schedule?
Are we calling, are we looking at the city manager correspondence item, or are we looking at just the particular city manager updates?
It's the updates that she provides about every week or 10 days.
That would be kept for five years at this point, and while they're active issues, correct? I think that's what this one says. Would you want those to be held on longer than that?
Five years is plenty. I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose it, because I had a couple of calls and saying this was the most valuable part of what some of the things that City Hall does, and they felt, several callers said, "We don't want to lose that." So I just want to make sure it's retained.
Okay, we could specify that that includes the city manager update? We could just add a line to that saying that includes?
Yeah, I'd like to do that, and then that will satisfy a number of people out in the public.
And again, those are all available. The historical ones are on the website at all times. So there's no need for a public records request for that.
Add it as you mentioned.
So then, yeah, so then the motion would then be to adopt the resolution, making the alteration to page CM1, and then clarifying in the third column, it is lobbyist reports, updates, and correspondence, including the city manager's weekly report?
So that's specifically for lobbyists? Do we want to just have a city manager update line and say five years?
Yes, that would be the smartest thing to do.
Got it. Done.
Okay, so let me make a new category just for city manager weekly updates.
Yeah, that's easy.
Okay, we can add that line.
And five is good for you, Jefferson.
Terrific.
Okay.
So if that's, is that your motion?
I'll make a motion on that.
Request I had, thank you. I'll second it.
Okay.
Do we need to restate the motion?
No. The motion would be then to adopt the resolution, adding a line item to page CM1 to clarify that city manager weekly reports will be maintained for a period of five years, the same as the lobbyist reports. Is that correct, really reflect your motion?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on to another consent item that's been pulled, 3B7. We have a staff report on that.
Certainly, Mayor. I'll just give a very brief review of what's in the written staff report. On January 28th, the council tasked the Disaster Response and Recovery Ad Hoc Committee to solicit bids for a firm to conduct an after-action report. And on March 11th, the council approved the consulting firm of Management Partners to conduct that. And on August 12th, a draft report was brought forward to the council, and the council directed staff to correct any typos and provide comments back, which were done to the consultant and before you as the final report. I will add that the after-action report did include 53 recommendations, and staff has gone through those recommendations, and in the staff report provided an update as to what has been done, or if it was already completed. It's included in the staff report. So I'm more than happy to go through anything in detail if you have specific questions.
Okay, thank you, Reva. All right, public comments. I've got two slips. Craig Hill, but there's a note attached to this, four minutes. Is Lance Simmons here to give you his minute?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. So Craig? Thank you, you have four minutes.
Thank you again. The report correctly points out that evacuation is largely on the sheriff, not the city, but it fails to acknowledge the category of people who've gotten the message that if you want your house saved, you have to do it yourself. That's not news. The National Foundation for Environmental Safety wrote a report confirming that in the 93 fire, many houses were saved by residents. Last year, the majority of you, yourselves, were fighting the fire. We hail the Point Doom bombers. One of you said on TV news, "You stay and you do your best." But all that truth is in profound conflict with Sheriff Villanueva's doubling down on 100% mandatory evacuation policy. I've brought up this elephant in the room several times, and I'm getting the sense that maybe I'm supposed to pretend it's not real, especially when I read the report's recommendation 51. Quote, "The city needs to focus on the fact that the city is not legally obligated to support residents who defy a mandatory evacuation order." That's all it says about it. And sure, the city's not obligated to provide us each a fire hose, but as a government agency, it has a higher duty of care than the person on the street. So when it's reasonably foreseeable that some will stay and fight, the city must find some way to institutionally accommodate that reality. It appears that maybe the legal advice has been something like involvement would incur liability, but really, the city may have greater liability by ignoring this reasonable foreseeability. The report notes, quote, "Staff should take the lead in examining with other public safety agencies the opportunity to establish repopulation criteria on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis." Left unspoken, but more critically, the city should also take the lead in examining with other agencies stay-and-fight criteria on a neighborhood basis. So you can bring together the sheriff and fire department to devise a system to qualify residents with basic training like CERT, but with a focus on fire gear and techniques, maybe not the whole CERT. Maybe residents have to be part of a formal neighborhood brigade, which is something more neighborhoods should be developing, like Malibu West has. Maybe they have to sign a liability waiver. Maybe have two tiers of dolphin stickers, or something recognized by sheriffs distinguishing qualified residents from standard residents. Again, Australia has a workable color-coded system. Somehow get these agencies to provide a pathway to legitimization. Otherwise, the next big fire will be chaos like we've not yet seen. So on recommendation 50 pertaining to who should be allowed to pass blockades, you should include a category for qualified residents, or however you call it. And as for how serious Sheriff Villanueva is about zero tolerance, four days after the Getty Fire was fully contained, four days, sheriffs were still keeping Topanga closed to residents only preemptively, because it was still windy. Locking people out in the face of a hypothetical threat favors a military-style control over common-sense community interaction. And given all the social complexities, that sort of heavy-handed approach is bound to create more chaos in the end. Now that we have a new lead over at Lost Hills, Captain Vanderhorst, you have a fresh chance to impress upon the department that our community will be participating more in defending fires, not less. And maybe if Sheriff Villanueva can hear that from someone new, it will make sense to him this time. Because if nothing changes, it will be the sheriffs themselves who will be, in effect, putting life and property at risk by not having planned for the obvious. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Do we have any council comments?
I'd like to make some comments. I read through the report again last night in detail, and I really, last night, I really saw a lot more of the value, for whatever reason, the way I read it. I read the recommendations, oh no, the observations first, then the recommendations, and then the city's response. And to me, those 53 observations to recommendations, it's smart that we did that. So I think, Skylar, you were the push to bring that forward and have us pick a firm, as I remember. I know the council voted on it, but I really did see the value that we did that, and it was a nice, if nothing else, a nice checklist of the city on what they were working on. And I thought that was excellent. And then there was the few that, you know, were ideas we weren't really on yet or were doing something else. That's valuable information, because this was an overwhelming event that, you know, basically kicked everyone's butt, mine included. So I really saw the value in that report. It's different than the other reports. It's different than Brent's report from the LA Emergency Preparedness Foundation. It's different than the county report. And I think the three make a really interesting mix, because they all have different focuses. And I appreciate that. But I find, actually, the most value, when if you can somehow, and I don't know how anyone does this, read all three, if you really have a spare 12 hours to spend on it. I want to address Craig's comments, because I hear that a lot as a person here that goes from neighborhood to neighborhood, quite a few neighborhoods, and another one coming up here soon, to talk about fire brigades. And often, I'm there with Jerry, who's talking about fire ignition, you know, his program there, and so we're an interesting team, and we've been to quite a few neighborhoods together. How do I say this? I am not in favor of connecting volunteer fire brigades at this point to the city in any way whatsoever. And I'm going to tell you why. And this is probably not PC to say, but basically, I don't trust that whatever government agency we fell under wouldn't change how they run and how that works. And just like happened in Corral Canyon, end up with your fire engine gone because some new person in charge has a different plan. So to me, a volunteer fire brigade idea is to be taken very seriously by individuals. I don't see that California, our area of California has yet evolved where it makes sense to connect that, other than in communication and camaraderie and all that, to any other official outside agency. And there is actually, that agency does exist. It's called the Call Fire Program. It's extensive amount of training. I know half the people who engage in it in Corral Canyon didn't make it through the training. It was a huge amount of work. So when I go neighborhood to neighborhood, I don't tell anyone they should stay, because I saw in the Woolsey Fire, people that were trained in our fire brigade turn around and run away before the flames ever came. And maybe that was the smart thing to do. It takes more than training, it takes the right mindset, it takes an understanding of fire behavior, it takes the right gear. I think most of the people say they're going to stay right now have no gear, as far as I'm aware. Maybe they picked up a mask or something along the way. I hope they have gear if they're going to stay. And they have no training. So it worries me. When I go to a neighborhood to talk about this, the first thing I bring up is, the fire brigade is down the list. The first thing you need to consider is a neighborhood watch. You gotta know who your neighbors are. And most neighborhoods that really had suffered from extensive fire damage, one of the first things I learned at these neighborhoods is they don't really know their neighbors, or they didn't. They are now learning who their neighbors are. So call a neighborhood watch, give it another name, but knowing your neighbors, being organized, connecting, spending time together, getting to know each other, finding out who's vulnerable, finding out, you know, everyone's different particular is a first step, a big step. The second step is to harden your own home, as was the mayor said earlier. Firescaping. Harden your house, so when embers come, you can't control other people's properties ultimately, or state property, or federal property, or MRCA property, whatever it is. Harden your own home. The last thing you should look at, in my opinion, is a fire brigade, and it takes, it's a huge decision, and I think needs to be a personal one that, personal one that's well-thought-out minimally. Because I know when I stayed and fought the fire, we did evacuate off of one building. Because, you know, you have to be able to know when to go, if you're going to stay, because, well, as our ex-mayor can attest, it's real. Things get real in a hurry. And so those are my comments, with respect to what you said, and I understand it, Craig. That's just, as I go around, I think, no, I really don't actually want to be connected to another government organization on this program. I really would rather, it's been great, I must admit, Chief Osby on down has been much more receptive than they were at first, as we can talk about it. Some of the fire station, fire station came by our last training and hung out. They didn't help, they didn't do anything else, but that was encouraging and felt good. I think there's other ways to achieve this. So I agree with what you say as far as the difficulty with the sheriff department last time. I don't have an answer for that as I sit here, but those are my comments. Thank you.
I'm coming.
Thank you, go ahead.
Let me back up what Mikey just said and kind of answer what Craig, was Craig, you still there? Yeah. You're right, this is, the sheriff is very clear. He said, "Hey," and this is almost a direct quote, this is one of the meetings he had right after he got, won the election, it was at Duke's, after listening to two and a half hours of everybody bitching about everything. And he says, I want to paraphrase, but it was pretty accurate. He says, "Hey, we've got a disaster. It's a big operation. We give you the evacuation notice, we want you to get out fast, stay out. And the reason is because we got some big things to do, okay? And if you stay, you compound the problem. That if you're going to stay, you better provision yourself and be able to take care of yourself, and not have people need to bring you stuff and take care of you, et cetera." So that's pretty clear directive from the guy who's actually the guy who's in command of disasters in the county of Los Angeles. Now, you can like it, or not like it, but that's the way it is. So you just heard it. You have the freedom to stay, provision yourself, and be able to operate on your own. And it kind of makes sense. I mean, we may not like it, and I don't like it, the fact that they keep people out for a long time, I don't like it. But if you are ready to take care of yourself, you can operate freely within the evacuation zone. So the other thing I wanted to talk about is, you're right, you don't want to be, unless you, as an individual resident, are tied to a government organization for direction or certification or any of that stuff, whatever it is you choose to do during a disaster, the better off you're going to be. Takes a lot of personal responsibility and personal risk management to make those decisions, but let's go to those call guys. They had a neighborhood readiness group, because I went and talked to them after the Corral Fire, and they were very ready, and they were motivated. They knew what they were doing to take care of their neighborhood. Their desire was to take care of their neighborhood in a better fashion than happened in the Corral Fire. Then they were offered by the fire chief to be a part of the fire department and the call program. They actually asked me, I was a public safety commissioner at the time, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And I worked for the fire department. And I told them, "Don't do it, because you guys know what you're doing, take care of your neighborhood, and when the balloon goes up, if you're part of a governmental entity, you don't have any control over what you do." They may send you to go protect my canyon, and they didn't pay attention to me. And it was worse than- And it was worse than I had predicted. Somebody came and took their engine and took it somewhere else. Actually, took it to a fire engine, a fire station, okay? So within that equation there, there's plenty of room for people who want to have control over their destiny during a disaster and prepare themselves and understand the risk of living in a very high severity of fire hazard zone. There's certainly plenty of room for education on the part of the city, which I think we've been very good about doing and will continue to do. And me, I have a civic leader hat, I have a fire department hat, and I have a resident hat. And when I look at it from my resident hat, I want freedom of action and the ability to make decisions on what I want to do. So I support what you say, Mikey, and I don't encourage people to do anything that's beyond their risk tolerance, but the less you can be tied down to somebody else when all hell's breaking loose, and the more your ability to look after your own home and your immediate neighbors, the better off I think the town will be in toto. So, anyway, I support what you say.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the report by management partners.
Could I just make a couple brief comments before we go on the motion?
Sure.
Thank you, Karen. So there are the three reports. I was active in all three. I was interviewed by the Brent Woodward Report, which is the third report. I was interviewed for this report, as well as spending the most time on the Sheila Kuehl Report, which was the county. So I'm familiar with all three reports. I would encourage people to take the three reports when the final one is out from Sheila Kuehl's office, which should be very soon. I think we have a meeting on that 17th. 17th, thank you. And look at them yourself, pick out 10 or 12 of the things that you may have been most frustrated with as a resident or as a responder, and compare each of the three reports so that you get a fair assumption for yourself. Deduce the things that you felt were right and wrong about the city's behavior, your electeds, and everybody involved in this tough fire. Make your own decisions, make them educated. Don't listen to neighbors. Do it yourself. Because I did it on the three reports, and I found it fascinating. It kept me awake. I mean, I go, wow, that's interesting. I didn't think of that. I didn't think of this. So my position at this point is evaluate all three of the reports. I'm sure we can make the Brent Report available to people who want it. And let's work this out and look forward to the future, and then you make your decisions on whether you stay and you're prepared or not. You'll see that in the third report, that some people were prepared and some people were not. Those are all evaluations you should make as a community and as a HOA. And I think that's what we're down to, is HOAs making decisions, like your neighborhood or Point Dume. So, once again, look at all three reports. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to support that. I've read all three reports, and I agree, because they all come from different perspectives, and it's different institutions, and they emphasize different things. And I think that all three of them have good value.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Skylar, you had a motion to receive and file?
I'll second it.
We actually don't need a motion. So there's no objection, you can receive and file as the chair.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to item 4A. And we have got an item to amend the Malibu Municipal Code to allow violations of the local coastal program implementation plan to be prosecuted under the Malibu Municipal Code. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The next item on the agenda is the amendment to allow violations of the LCP to be abated under the MMC. Currently, the city's code enforcement staff have a number of tools available to them for obtaining compliance for violations of the Malibu Municipal Code. These tools include administrative citations, notices of violation, criminal prosecution, and civil litigation. These tools, however, are not available to staff when violations of the LCP occur. Currently, when a violation of the LCP occurs, the only recourse for code enforcement staff is through civil litigation through the city attorney's office, which is both costly and In many cases, when a violation occurs, it can be linked to the MMC, as many violations involve some sort of construction or development. This allows staff to abate the violation without requiring civil litigation. However, when violations occur that cannot be linked to the MMC, for example, the clearing of ESHA, or the unpermitted removal of a protected tree, staff's only recourse is to turn the case over to the city attorney's office. Although this may be an appropriate course of action for the more extreme violations, it may be seen as kind of heavy-handed when it comes to the less extreme violations. Some of the LIP chapters where violations have occurred include ESHA, native tree protection, scenic visual hillside resource protection, shoreline and bluff development, cultural resources, and public access. Should the ordinance be adopted, violations that occur within these chapters could be abated using the same code enforcement tool set currently allowed under the MMC. The proposed amendments would affect three sections of the MMC. Two sections reside in the general provisions section and include the amendment to an administrative citation and penalties, and general penalty section. The third section would be an amendment to the nuisance abatement section. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is requesting that city council direct us to schedule a second hearing and adoption of the ordinance, ordinance number 453, for the November 25th regular city council hearing.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, public comments. I have two speaker slips, but one speaker. So Angelica Ochoa will have four minutes if Elena Eager is here. Eager, okay, thank you.
My first time using the PowerPoint presentation, so if you just allow me a few seconds to, okay, great. Evening. With the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, what the city of Malibu is proposing is not reviewable by the Coastal Commission and does not safeguard against improper criminal The city notes that similar provisions were established in older, other coastal cities, but only cites the city of Newport Beach. I'd like to direct your attention to the city of Laguna Hills' local implementation plan. The city of Laguna Hills' LIP has criminal enforcement measures that offer protections against improper use. Also, in both instances, the enforcement measures are part of an LIP approved by the Coastal Commission. In this instance, the Coastal Commission wouldn't be approving the proposed amendment. Malibu's proposed MMC criminal enforcement measures do not safeguard against improper prosecution for alleged violations of Malibu's LCP, resulting in risk for criminalization of legal activity. Casing point, Malibu sued for this and lost. Under the proposed criminal enforcement measures, would this be criminal? Going back to our casing point, Malibu filed a civil action alleging Coastal Act violation. The court denied Malibu's request for an injunction. Had the proposed amendment been in place, the workers who installed the bench could have been arrested for doing their job. The proposed criminal enforcement increases our workers' exposure to exchanges with law enforcement, specifically our operations construction staff, who is mainly Latino with many who speak English as a second language. Now, in our casing point, in an instance like this, the Superior Court could ultimately dismiss the charges, but not after the employee has suffered a violation of individual rights of liberty and suffered irrevocable harm to the employees. And in this case, the employee would not be able to collect damages. Saying that the city won't use the proposed criminal enforcement amendments to prosecute legal conduct is not enough. Saying that the city won't use the criminal enforcement amendments to circumvent the judicial process is not enough. We need specific language to safeguard against abuse, intimidation, harassment, improper arrests, capricious enforcement, criminal charges for performing duties, and long-term The MRCA proposes safeguards like those found in the city of Laguna Hills' LIP. One, criminal enforcement is only a last step, and only when it's severe, willful, and egregious. The city of Laguna Beach also includes a specific circumstances when criminal enforcement should be proper. I direct your attention to the common letter that was submitted, as well as to the city of Laguna Hills' LIP. The MRCA urges the city to incorporate safeguards into its proposed criminal enforcement amendments to substantially conform as provided in the city of Laguna Hills' LIP.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any council comments?
I do. Trevor, I'd like you to weigh in on her comments, please.
Sure. I mean, I find it very ironic that MRCA is bringing this up. This is an organization that should be seeking to protect the environment. This is a tool to be brought in to help protect our environment and to enforce the Coastal Act. The Coastal Act has some enforcement mechanisms, many of them are exclusive to the Coastal Commission itself, but they are not prohibitive of us adding additional provisions in order to enforce our laws. We don't have a problem with capricious action. We very rarely bring criminal action in the city. It's a costly, a costly exercise and something we very rarely do. But again, it would be for egregious situations, and, you know, we have a good code enforcement, and we exercise our discretion, I would say, very appropriately and very restrained in the history. If there's any reason to have a codification of limitations on use of it, that would just cause problems. If there ever is criminal, criminal action brought, they would then challenge it to say that it's not egregious, it's not, you know, rising to the level where criminal prosecution should be brought. Of course, if the council is not interested in having criminal prosecution or wants to make any other adjustments, it can, but this is brought to deal with some frustration, especially in the code enforcement office, and dealing with some of these violations of the LIP that we've seen, and we have very limited ways to address it. This gives some additional tools for us to see our city protected and see our resources protected.
Thank you, Trevor. Council members, Skylar?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce some first reading ordinance 453 determining the project as categorically exempt from CEQA and amending the Malibu Municipal Code Sections 110-040, 1-16-010, and 8-28-010, providing penalties for violations of the LCP, LIP, and conditions of CDP, of conditional development permits, and have a second reading and adoption of ordinance 453 on November 25th, regular city council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. I just want to, before the vote, I have to read the.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Pete, but just to confirm, that's ordinance 453, an ordinance of the city of Malibu, determine the project as categorically exempt from CEQA and amending the municipal code Sections 1.10040, 1.16010, and 8.28010, providing penalties for violations of the local coastal program, local implementation plan, and conditions of coastal development permits.
So we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item 4B. Item 4B, amend Malibu Municipal Code to allow violations, no, excuse me, that was 4A. 4B, sidewalk vending ordinance. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, council. Tonight, I'm here to discuss and provide some input on a new ordinance for sidewalk vending. This ordinance will be put in place to put regulations on sidewalk vendors within the city limits. And so let me give you a little bit of history on why we're here. Back last January, the state adopted Senate Bill 946, and what this bill did is it legalized sidewalk vending throughout the whole state. What the bill also put in there, it prohibits cities from an outright ban of sidewalk vendors within its jurisdiction, but it also provides cities tools to regulate sidewalk vendors. And so tonight, I'm going to introduce or give a brief summary of the ordinance in place and be available for questions. So what is a sidewalk vendor? The definition of a sidewalk vendor, according to the ordinance, is a person who sells food or merchandises within a public right-of-way. So those can be someone that's selling the bonsai trees, the fruit, the, what, you name it, corn from a cart and stuff like that. So what the ordinance actually includes in there, it includes sidewalk vendors must get a permit from Public Works to operate within the city. And they must operate only in public sidewalks or pedestrian pathways. They can't operate anywhere else, but those are the two areas that they're actually able to operate. When they're operating, the vendors must make sure that they have a minimum of five-foot clearance from their operation within the sidewalk. So the sidewalk must have five feet, or pathway must have five feet for people to cross through. Another regulation is that sidewalk vendors must be 20 feet from an entrance or an exit to any building. And they also must be 500 feet from a school. Lastly, one of the regulations that's in there is that if a vendor is selling food, they must have a valid health permit, and they must show that when they get their permit to make sure that they're safe. Couple last, couple things here. The Senate Bill 946 also allows a city to issue fines for violation of the codes. They don't want city actually doing a criminalization of violations, but they do give the city's ability to fine people for doing that. And so violations for the street vendors that don't have permits will be, the first time they violate it, will be a $250 fine. The second violation will be $500, and then there'll be another $1,000 each time after that for that year. So those are the fines for the violators that don't have a permit. And so the ones that do have a permit and are violating the conditions of their permit, which is location and whatnot, the violation for the first offense is $100, the second offense is 200, and the third is 500 for any additional violation after that. With that, I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Any questions?
Do we have any speakers?
Oh, excuse me, we have two public speaker slips. Is it Stephen Hurd?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you're first, followed by Brian Merrick.
Good evening, council, and thank you for listening to me. My name is Stephen Hurd. I've been a I've been a resident of Malibu since 1971, almost 48 years. I'm second generation. My seven-year-old son Noah Hurd is third generation. He attends Point Dune School where I once went to school. He actually has his fire hero art right on the wall down the hall. Unfortunately, I'm a victim of the Woolsey Fire, with the total loss of all possessions. Did not have any insurance. I was able to help save a few handfuls of homes on Port Seven Selfridge. I've been a teacher, instructor, technician, and therapist for decades in Malibu. I'm the gentleman that sells crystals and fossils on the side of the road near the Malibu sign. I've been doing so in that particular location for over a decade and a half. I provide a service for the community, helping as many people as possible, tourists, locals, alike, with directions, advice, local information, and even calling in violations that lost to the Sheriff's Department as a second set of eyes on the side of the road. This is a safe area to conduct business and does not interfere with autos or pedestrians. It is within 30 feet wide and up to 80 feet wide by 0.26 miles long off the road at PCH, north of Cross Street, Luneta. If you are in favor of permit licensing, I would like to offer an idea to be entertained for a moment of adding a density amendment to the law so as not to get overcrowding in one zone. Perhaps one permit per thousand yards. This is my livelihood. This is how I pay my bills and feed my son and take care of my parents who are elderly. It has been a rough go for me the last year. I had to rebuild my business from scratch. I lost everything. And now that I'm just getting back on my feet, to lose this job at this location would be devastating. Please consider my words from the heart and do what is right in your conscience. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, next is Brian Merrick.
Thank you, council members, for your time. I'm here because I have known Steve since, well, since he's been born, really. And it is his livelihood. He is a local citizen. He is a law-abiding citizen. He has a sales license. He neglected to mention that, but he already has a license to do this kind of thing. And I'm all in favor of this ordinance to a certain extent. But I would ask you to ask the Public Works gentleman here, Rob, where in Malibu does a condition exist that his ordinance will actually allow someone to sell something? Most of you, I know you all, you've all been through Malibu. Where is there a sidewalk that's more than five, that would have to be 10 feet wide? That's the only place you could sell anything. So, if you've identified certain areas, I'd like to know, because I at the top of my head know of no place under those ordinance where it can be. Now, if your intent is to eliminate all sales, then you've done it in this manner. But I would argue that he's correct, that there are only a handful of safe places. I don't think that the ordinance should necessarily be restricted only to a quote-unquote sidewalk. I think it should be allowed in certain safe zones that you could identify by maybe like what he said, 20 feet away from a road edge or something. You know, something along those lines. Because I think it's a bit restrictive. But again, if your intent is to totally eliminate it, you should just eliminate it. But actually, he said you can't do that. But it seems like the law is doing that. So, that's...maybe he can answer that question. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Our next speaker, I received one more slip, is Mario Serna.
Hi. My name is Mario. I have a business in the City of Malibu. I used to work as the chef for the last 10 years. I was the chef on Christie's when I was at the hotel. And then I got transferred to the store they call Christie's Roadhouse, but it was burned down with the fire. So, I was out of job. So, then I had to force it to open my own business. So, I get a food truck. I'm working together with him. So, you know, if he...you know, if he passes all the things that he wants to do, it's gonna really affect us on the business. It's like I'm saying. Probably, you eat it from me, you know? It's like I'm saying, been working for many, many years in Malibu as a chef, cooking for Pepperdine and everything. Like I'm saying, we're not bad people, you know? We try to make a living. And, you know, I guess all I have to say, you know, you know, just think on the hard-working people. And thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Okay, council members, comments?
Yeah, so their beef with this is the description in the ordinance is like only on sidewalks or walking paths and so on and so forth. And what they're talking about is, you know, on the shoulder... I don't even know who owns that shoulder near the Malibu sign.
It's a Caltrans. They have that area he's talking about.
Well, there's a part of that shoulder area. It is city property. It's over there. There's Caltrans owns a certain part of it. And then beyond that part, it's...most of it is city property over there.
Yeah, so there, you know, I think what there's... Their reading of this is that they'll be run off of that spot. You know, I don't know. And maybe it's like, hey, loosey-goosey type of enforcement on this, and the ordinance is just...I mean, how do you accommodate these guys? Or what will happen to them? And will they have to move to a sidewalk? I guess is what I'm asking. It doesn't even address the truck thing that one guy's talking about, a food truck. That's a different thing, right?
Yeah, food trucks are a totally different thing. These are street vendors that are actually on the street. A food truck is totally outside the scope of this ordinance.
What about a food cart?
Food cart is in this ordinance. It is in this ordinance.
And so, is like somebody that's vending produce or something like that.
Yeah, or the corn, or, yeah.
Okay.
On a city... On a city street, just to be clear, not on Pacific Coast Highway.
So, wait, so this law doesn't apply to PCH? Because the way I read is it's citywide.
This is within the city's right-of-way.
Not the highway? That's part of the city's right-of-way, adjacent to the highway.
There's an existing law that prohibits vending on the state highway, so that's already in place. So, this specifically would address city streets and city right-of-ways. As Rob pointed out, there is a slight portion of city right-of-way on the very west end of town, near Luneta, where the city entry sign is. But other than that, the majority of what we consider the right-of-way along Pacific Coast Highway is state-owned.
So, it sounds like these gentlemen are already outlaws in terms of what they're doing, and they're not being run off at this stage, right?
Well, this ordinance would just be like, just remember, mentioned as just for the city streets, not with PCH, not within the Caltrans right-of-way.
So, it doesn't really affect them?
Correct.
I have a question. And I just want to make sure I understand it. What was the nexus of doing this? What problem were we trying to solve exactly?
So, the state adopted or passed a law that allowed street vending. And cities, unless they have an ordinance that addresses this, must abide by the state law which allows it, which means that we could have vendors up and down Cross Creek, up and down Malibu Road, Westwood Beach. There definitely were quite a few periodically through the summer. We've certainly seen an increase in other areas. So, this was just a kind of a cleanup item to make sure that if that becomes an issue, we have the ability to cite for those. Without that, we do not have any ability to cite for it, so.
So, okay, so, city streets... So, really, anything along PCH is not covered by... I just want to make sure I'm totally getting this, because I do, because these people brought up some good points. So, anything along PCH is nothing, is not in any way covered by this? That's a totally...
Correct.
Well, what if there's a sidewalk along PCH?
It's not within the city's streets or not within the city's right-of-way. It's only covering the city's portion of the right-of-way. And so, if there's a sidewalk on PCH, that would be Caltrans, and that would be the state. And that wouldn't be our jurisdiction. That wouldn't be us.
So, that person, I can't think of what they vend, but it's a fairly large cart at Westwood Beach. That would be covered by this ordinance?
Yes, on Westwood Beach.
I don't know. It's a big cart. I don't know. Never stopped at it, but...
I think it's a problem that we see crop up more during the summer months. Obviously, it's not something you need to adopt. But if you don't adopt it and there becomes a problem, we don't have any way of enforcing it. And I see the city attorney looking to weigh in.
Yeah, if you want to have carve-outs to be clear that certain locations are allowed also, you can adjust the ordinance to allow that if you want also?
Well, here's what I'm thinking. Here's what I personally experienced when I owned my own business in Santa Monica. I...and this is where I understand the ordinance, but I want to make sure I understand it in the context of Malibu. I had somebody who pulled up in front of my surf shop with a giant 30-something-foot RV outfitted as a mobile surf shop and opened his doors. And the guy was really excited. He was like, "Yeah, I'm so excited to be here." I'm like, "Wait a minute." You know, I've sat two decades establishing this place, paying rent, paying, you know...
It wasn't Zuma J. Surfports, was it?
It was not? Yeah, really. Then some guy named Jefferson comes out. No, not at all. So, I understand that if you're in the City of Malibu and you're paying rent, and somebody comes up on a city street next to you and tries to kibosh of everything you worked hard for, I totally get it. That I get. So, I just want to make sure I totally understood where we're going on this. And I don't know about carve-outs or anything like that at this point. That would take way more study than my brain can handle at this point. But I don't know if it's needed. And it doesn't...it seems like the main place I see it is PCH overall. I guess Westwood Beach, that one guy too. And I'm sure places I just don't notice it. And there's a lot out of the city, on Canaan, especially, so.
Well, I think it's, you know, states... Another state sort of superseding local control issue. And it's a sort of countermeasure to that, how much we enforce it or how enthusiastically is up to us. But I think it's a good idea. And I'd like to make a motion to adopt this. But I can make a motion in the meantime, can I not?
I have a couple of questions for Rob or for Trevor. I thought I heard twice that there's a section along Pacific Coast Highway near Luneta that is city property? Did I mishear you?
Yeah, there's part of that, that...I guess that turnout area right by PCH, right before you get to Tranqus, there is the Malibu sign area. A portion of that area over there is city's right-of-way.
Okay, were the shoulders super wide there?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right, so that is within our control?
Part of that, yes.
Okay. So, I just wonder if there's a way to get some traction for Mr. Hurd's question about our ability or our interest in adding a density amendment? Is that possible? Is it feasible? Could we hear anything about that? Trevor or Rob?
What kind of amendment?
Density. But we wouldn't get a cluster of vendors on top of each other, which probably wouldn't be the best idea for many reasons.
I mean, sure, that's something we want to add. Do you have a distance in mind? Or is it something you want to have? We could put this through, and we could have staff look into it and bring it back to amend?
I personally would like to see that happen.
But does that create a situation where then the first person gets there as early as they can and just forces the other person out potentially? I mean, unintended consequence?
You can see this activity in other communities. Quite often, we've seen south of Topanga, where motorhomes pull up and operate out of the motorhome in the public right-of-way. So, Caltrans has vehicle code violations that indicate where you can, what you can do with this. And that's in the vehicle code, as well as some of the penal codes in some of the cities. So, if you look down in Venice, Mar Vista, Santa Monica, those communities have had to do this because people are taking advantage of it. Not that Steve is, because I've had personal conversations with Steve about his. He's not bringing his motorhome in and camping out on one right-of-way and operating in another right-of-way. The way I look at this is if you're on PCH, you park your motorhome on PCH, and then you start to vend on the city sidewalk. Right now, we have no teeth. And 946 indicates that it's a free market, and I get free market. But where we're headed with this is not to penalize guys like Steve who conduct business in a fair manner, in a decent manner. And I know that, and I understand where Brian's coming from on this. But we're gonna open some floodgates here if we don't get something done. And I bet you would appreciate that because you do it the right way and the respectable way, where others do not. Without the teeth and without this kind of ruling, we can't even help you. So, let's look to our brothers and sister cities to the south and see what they're gonna go through, because they've already started.
I'm gonna make my motion again that we adopt it as is... You know, Karen wants to do the density thing. My recommendation is let's keep it simple at this point. And if we want to revisit the density thing in the future, we can do that. But that's my suggestion. If you want to talk more about the density thing, that's fine. But I just want to keep it simple at this point. See how it goes.
I'll second that.
Can I ask one more question? Out of...because I'm still just trying to understand the situation here, because I live right near that city all the time. Would our slight...just out of...I'm really just curious now. Would our slice of whatever it is in that area, would that impact what Stephen's doing out of curiosity? Because I have no idea.
I mean, you could easily just add that to the ordinance and kind of keep that area out or include that area.
Well, I don't know what...if it would impact...I don't know how wide it is. I don't know where it is. There's no signage. There's no fence.
There's also private property that comes up that hill to the part of the flat area as well. So, you have three entities that claim some type of jurisdiction, private property, Caltrans, and the City of Malibu. So, if you did that survey, actually took a survey marker guy out there, he'd show you that.
So, I know that portion really well. And it's whole city from there going all the way down to Malibu or to Broad Beach. So, it's Caltrans up to a certain point. And I want to say probably maybe five, 10 feet of that section where that turnout is, it could be the city's property. And it goes all the way down to the city's right-of-way on Broad Beach.
So, you're saying that it would be a public sidewalk or paved pedestrian path specifically designed for pedestrian travel, so it would be allowed in that area?
Well, that...we can designate that to be pedestrian pathway, or we can make sure that that is defined in that area.
Would it fit the definition as it is, or would it need alteration?
I think it would be an alteration because it's not really a pathway for pedestrians. It's more of a shoulder area for parking.
Okay.
I would...I mean, if you want to include that in there, you have to make some sort of reference to like a dirt.
I mean, we could specify a specific area if you want to call out that this specific area that is allowed. Because it's probably amendment 5.60060A, no sidewalk vendor shopper in the following locations. And it says, "In a street, driveway, alley, median strip, by path, public lot, or other publication, there's not a sidewalk that turns a 5.60." And you say, "Except for however you would define this space."
So, put the exception in there for this space?
So, not include...
However you want to work out.
Are we gonna turn it into a flea market, too?
Yeah, dude, we're going Venice Beach, dog. Lottery system? I know how they do it.
We shouldn't be taking comments from...
I appreciate the comment from the peanut gallery. I'm just joking.
I have a question. So, I...I'm hoping there's a way to figure this out. But I too am cautious about unintended consequences. If a certain area is designated, like the area we're talking about, I don't want to see...I don't want to see us create a situation where there's a scramble, you know, every morning when the sun comes up. you know, every morning when the sun comes up for that space. So Rob or Trevor or Skylar, can anybody help me out with this?
In the ordinance here, it references a permit system. So you can issue Steve a permit, and I mean, I don't anticipate us getting more than five, ten people, maybe twenty people come in for these. And if we have a problem that starts to creep up somewhere, we have the authority to re, to alter an ordinance and make it applicable to the area however we see fit at that time. And right now, it's not a problem. I don't think it's, you know, I just, it's simple, it's on the books. We can have it this way, he can come in and apply for a permit under the way that it's totally written right now. You do need to add some different language to say like a side of the highway turnaround that's not paved. I don't know how you want to say that exactly, Trevor, but it's essentially like a dirt turnout.
If you're not going to specifically mention this spot, then I would think, I would suggest I need to back to staff to study any other language you put in because it could designate a bunch of other areas of the city that we're not aware of it. I would be careful about.
So Rick, should I just reference the area at the west end of Malibu next to the sign?
No, I think you should just leave it and just use this as something for city streets and those guys can take their chances where they are, I think they're fine where they are.
The issue with that makes it, they want to try to be legit, and under the way that the ordinance is written, then they can't be legit because they technically cannot bend in that kind of area.
Then send it back to staff and start to get complicated.
All right, I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance with, or to send it back to staff for further review.
So it's a motion to amend the motion?
To amend, a motion to amend the motion for it to go back to staff and have some clarifying language that will come up and reference this area specifically.
So.
Yes, exactly.
So your motion's actually just to direct staff to come back with language that would allow them to operate in that area without specifying it specifically, is that?
Yes.
Motion, is there a second?
I, sorry, I do have a question. Are we talking about that specific location or a description of that type of location?
I think the direction was to, was to not specify a specific location, but those types of locations, you know, language that would.
Look, I see that that being okay, I see that there's, you're probably going to have, you know, like you talk about the thing near westward, you talk about PCH, like south of Malibu seafood, like it's an area where it's not like wide, like one or two cars could park there. This is an area where there's like, you know, forty, fifty feet of zone there away from the highway, and it's, seems to me a lot safer than if you were to just have it rapidly up and down PCH when the median's only one car wide. You have the area down by Las Tunas on the beach there. Those are just, you know, things that come to mind, most of the other areas that are like this are outside of the city.
Well, there's Corral, Las Tunas, there's several places in the city. And we have to be, you know, aware of this, that by messing with something like this right now, we may be casting a shadow on us.
The other alternative would be.
Effectiveness.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. The alternative would be to pass it as is now and then direct staff to come back with an amendment to allow it in certain areas, then we have something on the books so that we're not subject to the state's imposition.
I'm okay with that.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so the motion.
The motion is to pass the ordinance the way that it is and have staff come back with some carve-out. Potential carve-out, language change.
So to clarify, the motion is staff's recommendation, but also to direct staff to study options for allowing sidewalk vending in areas such as the council's discussed here and bring back options for the council to amend the ordinance, is that correct?
That sounds correct, Rob, sorry.
So are we looking to come up with a carve-out area that specifies maybe the width of the shoulder to make it safe? Is that somewhere we're kind of heading to and really kind of coming up with a definition of where a shoulder area is, let's say thirty feet wide can accommodate, you know?
One vendor. I know who that vendor is.
Something like that to where it could accommodate.
One vendor per 500,000 square feet.
What do you want it, that too, do you want it to be, have it?
No, I just think, no, I think if we, you can look at a couple of areas along the highway and you know where it's wide. You know, I think it's probably wide, significantly wider than thirty feet up there.
Areas where it can be accommodated without being a safety issue.
Exactly. That's what I'm, that's what I'm afraid of, I think that area right there is safer than most, and if we start really saying shoulder areas and doing that, and that can be pretty dangerous. And so, you know, we really got to look at, make sure that those shoulder widths are really wide enough for safe people going in an area, parking and moving around that area, so.
Okay, so we're talking about identifying some threshold, physical characteristics?
Some options that would allow it safely to, sidewalk vendors to safely operate in additional areas of the city, similar to the ones that have been discussed.
And limiting the number in a linear.
I don't care about the number right now, we can cross that bridge if we get there.
I, I just, I feel like we're kind of band-aid, putting a big band-aid on this thing. I mean, if we're going to do this, in my mind, why don't we decide what areas make sense and issue some sort of $25 permit so we actually know who's there and they have that space instead of leaving it a free-for-all? It just seems odd to me that we're trying to make this bizarre carve-out. I get where we're going, but I don't know if we're going the right way. It seems if we want to identify five spots in Malibu, and I don't know what it is, and let someone have a permit so it's their spot to use on whatever day, that to me makes maybe more sense than sort of this nebulous, I don't know.
I don't think we should issue a permit for a particular spot. These are mobile things that people move in a day-to-day basis, and it's not like, okay, Bill, you got this spot, this is your spot, I don't think we should do that.
Well, I mean, I mean, to open a business in Malibu, generally you have a location. So what, I'm not sure if this is any different. I mean, for, you know, Stephen then, he would know he had a spot because he has a permit, and that's his, as opposed to if this vending's really coming and coming strong, there's going to be somebody who's going to be there way earlier and just stake that thing out. And I don't know, it just, it just feels like maybe we're creating an unintentional mess where we could do it cleanly and leanly and know there's only a few permits or something like that. I almost feel like we're not ready for this, but that's just my opinion.
Do we have a motion?
So I'm not helping, in other words, is what I mean.
You have a motion and a second, so you can call the motion if you want or if you want to change.
Trevor, would you mind repeating the motion?
Sure. The motion would be to, that's staff's recommendation, which includes the adoption of ordinance number 454, in ordinance of the city of Malibu adopting or adding chapter 5.60 sidewalk vending to title V of the Malibu Municipal Code and finding the same exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. In addition, you've directed staff to research options for amending this ordinance to allow additional sidewalk vending in areas that are safe and other options to the city, if there's any other specific things you want directed to the staff, but that's what I understand it to be, is that correct?
Can I add to that very briefly, one sentence? Historical reservations should have some kind of possession here.
So there'd be options, options for preference or allowing?
Well, I like, he's a geologist, that seems to be something that we need around Malibu.
Okay, it sounds like that's not accepted from the. Yeah, I think that's a little beyond the purview of this. This is just a general thing, not something that's supposed to accommodate one particular individual. This is a general ordinance. Okay, so you're not accepting that addition? That's me.
I think not. Okay.
Just suggesting.
Thank you.
Is everyone clear on the motion?
We have a motion and a second, Heather, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Is this Councilor Pete or Councilor Mullen?
It's me, yes.
Councilor Pete?
Sorry, what?
It's Councilor Pete's motion.
Oh, no, it's Councilor Mullen's motion.
Okay.
Councilor Pete was the second. Is that correct? That'll do.
Councilmember Mullen?
Aye.
Councilor Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pearson?
No.
Mayor Farr?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. All right, we are on to item number. 4C. Adoption of an urgency ordinance to temporarily prohibit no-fault evictions. All right, do we have a staff report?
So this is something that was brought on with urgency because if we don't push it through now, it basically removes the ability for us to do anything about this before the end of the year. If someone has already received.
I'm sorry, could we ask you to take the conversation outside, thank you.
If someone's already received, once someone's out of possession, there's nothing that the city's able to do about it. So the point of this ordinance is to prevent no-fault evictions through the end of the year until AB 1482 comes into play. So it prohibits someone from kicking someone out for renovations or other no-fault situations until the end of the year, after January 1st, then that would be allowed, subject to the provisions of the new law, which would require some, it puts restrictions on your ability to evict, and it also provides compensation for, for people that are evicted through no-fault situations, and it also puts limits in on the rent that can be established. So that person's in place at the start of the year. Even if someone raised the rent during this period of time, there's provisions already in the law preventing or limiting that increase. So what's up here is that we've actually, I'm actually proposing to change the ordinance as proposed to you. Instead of putting it into our municipal code, Alex, if you can scroll through, and this has also been distributed to the council, is the ordinance an urgency ordinance would instead just be an ordinance, not put into the municipal code? There's no need that it would have to be in there. This removes our requirement that we'd have to go back later and clean up and take this out. So it essentially does the same thing, but just through an ordinance rather than an amendment to the municipal code. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Trevor. Okay, we do have two public speakers. The first one, Michelle Mayor, and the second one, Brian Merrick.
Hello, hi Mayor and Councilman members. I am, I am a renter for sixteen years in Malibu, and in mid-July, I received a phone call from my landlord, someone in her office that said that we're going to give you a notice to quit August 1st, sixty-day notice, and sort of made up some, well, it's phase two of the sewer, and then they said it was, we're just kind of going to go a different direction with the property, and then they said we might have some family members moving in and whatever. And where I live is in Sarah Retreat, and there are seven units, and there were nine people living there. And as of now, there's, eight of us have left, and there's one still remaining. He's gotten an extra month to stay. And in any case, it's been a pretty tough experience going through this process of being evicted after being there for sixteen years, and they didn't make it very easy for us. I do, I went ahead, a friend of mine had found a notice about that there were some protection rights because this effect, this law was going to affect January 1st. And as I went out, when I first found out, I was like, okay, I'll go find a place to live. And when I went looking around, it was like so hard to find anything on the west side, and I spoke to different realtors who said that there are people who are being evicted left and right, developers were kicking people out and raising the rents, and that was what was going on. So in any case, I kept looking and, you know, finally I did find something, and I have actually moved to the Palisades as have most of my other neighbors in the units in the complex where we lived. But the one thing is, is the city of Los Angeles did pass this ordinance, and they asked, I started, I actually went to the assemblyman who passed the bill, it's 1482, for this law to go in effect, and David Chu, and I went to his office, or I called his office in Sacramento, and they tied me in with the ACCE who found me legal clinics to talk to, and they also said, you know, we're really trying to stop this and ban it before it because the evictions are out of control. And they said, go to your local Malibu city and see if they can pass it because we can, we're going to try to pass it in Los Angeles, which they did. And so anyway, I'm doing this after the fact, but I also think that, you know, we can, there are rights of, you know, relocation fees that we can get and that kind of stuff. So that's why I showed up to talk, and thank you, Karen and Mayor.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next speaker is Brian Merrick.
Thanks again, and I'm not here to necessarily dispute this in any way, so I'm, I'm kind of go either way on it, but I'm here, so I'm going to talk. One of the things is, is this law just basically a reiteration of what the state law is? That's already passed and you're just enforcing it now?
Respond after you're.
Okay, so basically that would be my concern, and then this law would, if it's different, then I'd want to know, does this sunset then when the state one comes in or not? But if it's the same, then, you know, it's the same, so it doesn't matter to me whether it's now or later. But if the laws are different, I'm concerned about that. But the biggest issue that I really care about, to a certain extent, is, you know, I'm trained in economics, I got degrees in economics, and, you know, rent control is supposed to protect the poor deserving tenants from, you know, greedy landlords, but, and it does up to a point, but research shows that rent controls actually, you know, will make it more likely that there'll be less supply. Rent controls do not address the actual issue that is causing this lack of supply. The problem is, is that it doesn't do anything about the fact that rents are rising, which is that there are more people who want to live in these desirable areas than there are homes for them to live in. I mean, it's really a housing issue. Housing follows the same basic laws of economics as other goods and consumer needs. When the demand for a product consistently exceeds the supply, prices will rise until the quantity demanded is equal to that of the suppliers have available. So you can change which people get to live in a city, but you will leave just as many people out in the cold, actually a few more, because rent control reduces the incentive to supply rental housing because of the fact that there just isn't any more of it, and it's really zoning laws probably that have more to do with it, the lack of housing. You know, Malibu should brace for more problems. Declining housing stock is just one of the potential costs of rent control, including the fact that landlords will stop investing in their properties because they're not going to get any return out of it because they've got someone in there. I know people, I have friends that have places in Hollywood that are under rent control. They're paying way below rent, and they're not, they live elsewhere, but they keep these places. So they never come back on the market. So that's part of the problem that rent control has. You know, so I'm just, I'm just against price controls. Look at what's happening, on any price controls, you end up with shortages. There's a free market thing going on. And, you know, this isn't just a Malibu issue. The rents, year over year, are increasing thirteen percent in Compton. So there's not as many people clamoring to get into Compton, but yet their rents are going up too. So I don't know, I'm just opposed to any kind of price controls on a basic conceptual issue, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, I can respond briefly. I also want to point out that a copy of the proposed changes to the ordinance are available up here if anybody wants a copy that was shown on the PowerPoint. The city's not putting any rent control in, that's the state that's put that through. All this is doing is saying that you can't evict someone in the next two months for a no-fault situation so that people can't artificially kick people out that have been in their location, I'm sorry to hear that, for long periods of time, just so that they can raise the rent before this comes into play. So that's the purpose and the limited part of this, and after January 1st, we'll have no further need. This prevents people from sneaking in and evicting people before the end of the year.
Brian, does that answer your? Brian, does that answer your question sort of about it? The California law is rent control. It's, well, it's more of a whatever rent controller, rent stabilization, saying that it can't increase over X amount, over X amount of time, based on CPI or that arbitrary 10% over a 12 month period. I'll make a motion to let you read the title and approve this.
I'll second it.
Okay, and that's to approve ordinance number 455U, in ordinance of the city of Malibu temporarily prohibiting no fault evictions through December 31st, 2019 for residential real property built prior to January 1st, 2005, declaring the urgency thereof and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and introduce on first reading ordinance number 455, in ordinance of the city of Malibu temporarily prohibiting no fault evictions through December 31st, 2019 for residential real property built prior to January 1st, 2005 and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And to clarify, the versions that you're proposing are the ones that were put on the PowerPoint and are not being put in the municipal code, but just being adopted as, as both an ordinance and an urgency ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number 7A, proposed 2020 calendar of city council meetings. I don't see, oh, we have a public comment? Brian Merrick? Do we have a staff report on the calendar?
And did you have a comment on the city's calendar for next year?
Oh, okay, so I think you mean 7B? Okay, that's all right.
I was going to say, boy, no one's ever commented on the calendar before. I think you should be here on 4th of July, damn it.
Okay, um, council comments? Okay, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion.
All right, I'll second.
That's staff's recommendation?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our final item, red flag conditions, Mayor Pro Tem Pearson. Do we have a staff report? Okay, Mikey, this is your item, excuse me.
Okay, this item here is actually, is really not my item, it's Judy's item, which I thought was fantastic. So I, I brought it forward, actually with Riva's help. So this is to request, we write a letter to the National Park Service, California Department of Parks and Recreation and MRCA, requesting the parks, trailheads and surrounding open space areas in Malibu be closed during red flag conditions. Recognizing, sending the letter is a good first step. Maybe there should be other steps at some point, like a phone call. And I'm well aware, or was it possibly Judy came upon, I don't know, somebody else maybe. One of the parks opened during a red flag event, that was a little bit scary. So.
Didn't get the invite to the party we were having up there?
That, that is it.
Okay, thank you. We have two public speakers. I think the first one is Brian Merrick and then Judy Villablanca.
Since I got here, might as well exercise my public right to speak. So appreciate it again to take up some of your time. On this one, I, I'm fully behind it. I think that there's a disconnect between state parks, national parks and what's going on with the city. And I, we encourage more communication between them because frankly, the, the city is doing a much better job than they are, okay? Maybe not so much national parks, I think they do a fair, a better job than states, but states is pretty neglected. And then the only thing I would say is that I would like to include something or you probably won't do it, but I'd like to see a potential to include, like the city of LA does, where state parks and national parks will do something during red flag warnings about the homeless encampments within their parks.
They actually. Yes, yeah, that's, that's, that's already, that's already happened.
Bringing them all to your house.
Okay, Judy Villablanca, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, I know it's late. I mean, I think this is a simple thing with all the complicated things we try to do to prevent fire. This is simple. Probably many of you know, I live on Winding Way, so we have Escondido Canyon, you know, which is very popular. And every time I walk out there to take pictures to say something to Joe, I find cigarette butts, you know, in the canyon, which terrifies me. And I can tell you, I have pictures of neighbors over the years that go up there and find, you know, campfires. So, and I think part of, a lot of this is just people don't know. I, I will, my own self, when I first moved to Malibu, I had a birthday party for my son and we were taking like a bunch of little 10 year old boys mountain biking and we were going to Sycamore Canyon and it was like a horribly windy day. But I was, I didn't really understand that risk in those days. And I got up there and they had a sign, closed red flag day. And I thought, oh, you know, we'll just go into the canyon. And then I got in the canyon, I'm thinking, oh my God, I'm in here with like six little boys. I could never get out of here if there was a fire. And obviously, I lived here now 20 years, I wouldn't do that. But I didn't know, and I think a lot, I know a lot, I, I walk our canyon a lot. A lot of people come up there, you know, they're nice people with kids, they come from all over. They don't understand the water falls dry after we've had seven years of drought. I mean, they just don't know. They're nice people, they're out there for a hike. But when, Escondido Canyon is a box canyon. Like I could probably figure the back way out, but if you're not from there, and that's true for a lot of canyons. I know after the Corral fire, that the Corral group got to enforce like no parking on red flag days up there. I do think, like I said, state parks, I think closes. The issue you're going to have is somebody to enforce it. Because like on our street, you know, there's a ranger like twice a week and they don't sit there. I mean, after the Woolsey fire, when it was closed, you know, they, they did have a ranger up there more than normal, but there were still all kinds of people going in. And we have people going up after dark, which might be the other issue. I mean, I guess if there aren't bad winds and they start a fire after dark, it's not so terrible. But the after dark is the really scary part. Obviously, that's what happened with the Corral fire. So I, I'm sure it's going to take more than a letter. I think the MRCA, it's a staff issue that they'll bring up because they don't have rangers. You know, if, like closing those parking lots at night, I don't know, like if, you know, on red flag days, if you have gates and teeth, you could use those on those kinds of days to keep people out. I mean, I would really like to see the city have a conversation with all these agencies about a lot of these issues. There's a lot of public safety issues, I know Rick and I have talked about this many times. So, but this is a good place to start. I think MRCA will be your, your big challenge for staffing. So if, and the, the one other thing I might just add, if it's like a beach area, like for like Leo Carrera, you wouldn't close the beach on a red flag day. So you might want to specify canyons, you know, like high fire zones within the parks, right? Because there are some, like Topanga State Beach would be fine too, so. But thank you for working on this, I hope they listen.
Thank you, Judy.
One comment I'll make, Judy, is Arson Watch is doing a pretty good job at directing us that are volunteers on red flag days to definitely cruise by these areas. And I'll, but I'll talk to the head of Arson Watch, Todd, and, and sort of let him know what's going on here. And so we can, he can direct us even more in that way. So there are. No, but we can, you know, we can educate, we can do all those things you talked about. And that's, you know, one of the biggest functions that Arson Watch actually does.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion?
I forget the name.
Yes, I know.
I'll make a motion to approve item 7B.
I'll second it.
No, it's good, no, we're good, let's move it along.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn in memory of?
Yes.
Les Wiggins.
Yes, we, we, I have a motion to adjourn in memory of Les Wiggins.
Make the motion.
All right, thank you. All in favor? So if.